Thank you for your patience. We're back, voting to come out of executive session. Tentative resolution has been reached between Ms. Lewis of the housing authority and the board, subject to the terms of that resolution being finalized. And we will attempt to have a public statement as soon as possible. And we will notify the media as soon as it's been finalized and we can legally release it. So again, thank you for your patience. Next item?
Number five.
Need a motion or call?
Walk.
Well, we did walk-in. Any walk-ins? None. Accept resignations of the animal control board in the cable television committee.
Motion?
Please.
Will the board of selectmen vote to accept the resignation of Joan Hopkins from the animal control board? Going to do them separately or together? Together.
Together, why not?
And the resignation of Kathleen Meeker from the cable television committee. And further, the board thank Ms. Hopkins and Ms. Meeker for their volunteering their time and their expertise to these groups.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
I see Kathy right there. Kathy, thank you very much for all your help on that committee. It was very, very helpful.
Meet applicants for cable television committee, water resource committee, and library board of trustees. Let's take cable television committee first. Someone, yes, there we go. Thank you. Why don't you come up and say hello? Some of us know who you are, but sit down. Brief statement.
I'm Peter Struzero. I'm the head of teen services at the Situate Town Library. And I just wanted to hopefully try to step in for Mrs. Meeker and keeping with a library, a library person onboard. In my, I've been in the position for about a year in town and moved to town about six months ago, trying to get more active in the community, and I thought it was a good opportunity.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Are you related to the Struzeros that have been down, I think, often, not just for a year?
It's a distant relation, but I am, yeah. The dentists.
Yes.
Yes.
I was pleased to see that you have, you were a member of the Methuen Cable Access.
I was, yeah. I was, I served as the teen librarian in Methuen as well. And we did constant programs for the kids and we worked back and forth with Methuen Cable Access. So at one point, I joined that group as well.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll be making, we'll do the interviews if you call them that now, and then we'll make the appointments later on tonight. Thank you. Thanks for coming in. And no need to stay around for the whole meeting either. More than welcome to, if you'd like, but. Water Resource Committee. Yep, how are you?
Well, how are you?
Good, thank you. I know you've served on boards before, but if you just?
Sure. Mark Curran, Seven Man Hill Road. Lived there with my wife, Donna. Have been here for about 20 years. Previously served a term on the Water Resources Committee and was also on the Conservation Committee previously.
Questions, comments? Matt, thank you.
I was delighted to see Mark throw his application in again. As he said, he was on the committee, then took a year or two off, and this is good stuff.
Glad to be back.
And the library board of trustees, Nancy.
Have lived in Situate for 35 years now. Served on the library trustees for eight years from 2000, 1999 to 2008. Disastered by we're still in the position that's currently open and kind of interesting to see that what we had talked about four years ago is now coming to fruition, so looking forward to doing that.
Moments. Nancy, thank you.
Thank you.
Again, we'll make these appointments later on in the agenda. Thank you all for coming again. And again, to all the applicants.
Do we have? Is this one? No?
Yeah, number seven.
Kathy, are you being appointed for anything?
No, but there's a joint vote that's supposed to take.
Oh, right.
It's number seven?
Okay.
Okay, something. We'll get to that. Give us one second.
You?
Go ahead, something.
Want me to do the resignation?
Yeah, do the resignation.
Also, we have a letter of resignation from Elise Fendell. I'd like to inform you that I'm resigning from a position of the library trustees effective July 28th. And again, we want to thank her for serving, and we'll get a letter out to that effect, Kim?
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much.
Have we moved to accept that resignation at a previous meeting, or do we need to move that now?
It's an elective position, so I don't believe the board needs to accept a resignation formally, but I just wanted you to see.
Understood.
Letter of resignation so that you can go forward with a joint vote of both forms.
No, I just wanted to double check, because before we appointed somebody, I wanted to make sure that it was actually vacant, so.
It appears that one of the positions that we just interviewed for, these are joint vote of the trustees as well as the board. And rather than keep the trustees here till midnight, why don't we go to number seven now, if we could, and make that joint vote now? If the chairman of the trustees would come up, just to thank you. And make the nomination. Mariela Gaziano, if she could make the nomination. Any comments you'd like to make?
We'd like to nominate Nancy Vasekis as a member of the board of trustees at the library and welcome her aboard.
Kim, we'll have a roll call vote of the trustees first and then us? Is that the?
Probably need a second from somebody on the.
Second?
Second by Kevin Carlton.
Do you want me to do the?
Actually, do you mind listing off your members? I don't have a.
No, that's fine. Lee Vickers?
Just say aye.
Kevin Carlton?
Aye.
I can't include Nancy. Carol Sullivan Hanley?
Aye.
And Chris Marachi?
Aye.
There he is.
And myself, Mariela Gaziano, aye.
Motion?
Aye.
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 Yes.
Aye.
Congratulations.
It seems to be unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay.
Did we? Did we do the motion?
Good luck.
Did we leave the?
We took a vote. I'm not sure. We didn't read the exact motion.
Should we read the exact motion? She moved.
She made the motion. She just moved.
She made the motion. Okay.
You're fine.
Number eight, discussion on day wine and malt beverage license. William Fuller from the Inlee School, November 2nd and 3rd, benefit for the homes for our troops. If you would, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bill Fuller, and I own the bartending service of New England. My company is working with the Plymouth and South Shore Association of Realtors for a fundraiser for two days, excuse me, for two days at the Inlee School. It's a fundraiser for homes for our troops. They've contracted with our company, and we've made application for a special one-day beer and malt license with your town. This is the first time I've been before this board.
Thank you. Discussion from the board?
Just tell me a little bit about what does your company actually do? Do you come and host the party or serve?
That's correct. We host, we provide the tip-certified and insured bartenders. We make all the arrangements with the wholesalers for the product delivery. How we handle the transportation of the delivery and taking it away from the property at the end of the events. We've been doing this since 1992, and this is the first time I've been to Situate, so it's nice to be here.
Have you had any violations the last three years?
No, not yet.
And the event is on, I guess, on November 2nd?
And November 3rd.
And the 3rd.
Correct.
So tell, do you know anything about the event itself?
It's the second annual, it's a talent show that the, this group of realtors puts on. I heard it's quite entertaining. They were in Middleborough last year, and that's how they came of con, my company, that's where we're based out of. And so this is the second event. They're expecting a couple hundred people on each night. I'd give you a better estimate, probably next year with something to go by, but it sounds like it's going to be a good time.
And it's going to be held right at the Inlee School?
That's correct.
Six to 10.
Six to 10.
Motion?
Motion?
Please.
Move the board of selectmen vote to grant a one-day wine and malt beverage license to William Fuller, the bartending service of New England LLC, for a fundraiser event taking place at the Inlee School at 45 Watch Hill Drive, Situate, on Friday, November 2nd and Saturday, November 3rd, 2012, from 6:00 PM until 10:00 PM each evening.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I don't know if you, I think you mentioned it, but just so you know, the proceeds from this event go to homes for our troops. So that's the fundraiser that the, that the event is supporting. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion of the Route 3 roundabout landscape plan, Kennedy Country Gardens, and Jim Cantwell, I think is scheduled to be here, I don't know if he is.
Chairman, I told him to be here and asked him if he would be here at 7:30 or a little after. You're doing such a good job, you're ahead of the schedule, so would you like to move this back a little further, a couple items more, take care of some other business?
Sure.
Or we can proceed without him?
Well, number 10 has been canceled.
You can do your 7:30 if you want to reverse the order.
Pardon? Yeah, the, both candidates here?
One is here, so.
One is here. That's Poller, I think, right?
Yes.
Why don't we bring Poller in and moving to?
So should we first note that number, item 10 has been?
Hold on, wait. The agenda says that we're going to do that at 7:30?
Let's start now.
That's okay?
Yeah, why don't, why don't we? Jim will come in.
Whoa, 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 whoa. Why don't you get back in? The board, peers of board wants to do Al now.
No, I'm okay holding off Al. I just, the interview says it's 7:30, and so I want to make sure that that's okay to deviate from the agenda.
That would be fine. I mean, just.
Okay. Well, while Al's up there, we could do number 12. It's the betterment for the road. Why don't we do that? Let's do 12. Make it even more.
All right, number 12.
12, betterment?
Maybe we can be slow enough that you don't get here.
By that time, maybe 7:30, we'll have to.
Number 12.
We're number 12?
12. Yeah, we'll do the, let's do the betterment for the.
Oh, my number 12. There are three of us here tonight, as you can see, myself, Kathy Joyce, and Jenny Newcomb from the Old Mouths Road subdivision area. And we're here to talk about a program that we voted on and at special town meeting in October of 2011 called the Private Way Repair Program. Old Mouth Road has stepped forward, the residents in that area, and said they would like to move into this program. And let me explain just briefly how this program works. For parts of town, for a road or a group of roads where we, where they are designated, not yet designated as public ways, but are private ways, and where the residents are fine with leaving those as private ways, and perhaps even there's no way to move forward to become a public way because of the type of road or the expenses involved, there's an alternative program available, which is called the Private Way Repair Program. This is a program whereby residents get together, petition the DPW for a program to put together that will provide maintenance of the road over five years. In working with the residents, then, we came up with a program that would meet what the residents would like to see for the roads in their area in terms of the degree of maintenance. A price has been placed upon that. This is a program that will end up costing the residents through a betterment, and then, by the way, then the, then the maintenance is paid for by a betterment on the properties in the, in the affected area. The particular program that was put together for Old Mouth Road is one that will cost the residents approximately $125 per year. They'll pay that over five years. The DPW will then, with them, in agreement, manage a contractor who will come in and four times a year regrade and dress the road and keep it in top-notch shape for them. So this is a program that we've done where private ways cannot or do not choose to become forward as public ways. And we have many private ways like this. So I have to say that Old Mouth Road and particularly these two community leaders here are more or less my poster child for this program, because after quite a bit of discussion, decided that this is what they'd like to do, and they've worked to get 65% of the residents on the street have signed up for this program and recognize this is a difficult task to do in that area, because many of the residents are non-resident in the winter time, so it's a matter of trying to catch people. So with that, we're here to answer your questions.
Go ahead.
I mean, just one point is that, you know, when we passed this at town meeting, it was kind of thought that it would actually be a fix to a road, not really a maintenance program to a road. So I never had heard of, you know, just so people understand, this is a three-time-per-year grading and repair work to the road, whereas in the past, I think we even did one where we just went in, we fixed the road one time, it was a $100,000 fix, the betterment was assessed for 20 years, and it went away. So this is really an ongoing, so we're going to make sure that the roads are maintained on a regular basis, three times a year. And what is the time period?
Excuse me, you need to wrap this. You said four times a year.
Four times a year.
Maybe I missed it.
We really do need it every three months.
And the roads are dirt. They're not paved roads.
No, no, I understand that, but.
The difference with the, with the fix the road, the $100,000 fix, is that this is a particular area where paving would not be allowed, because it's on a barrier reef. So we had, in, this has been a several-year process, we've looked at all the alternatives about moving to forward, to private, to private to public. If they moved to public, what would that mean? What could be done to bring it up to a standard? And we worked with the DEP and Conservation Commission, and we're at the point where we cannot do something that's permanent. These will be gravel-type roads forever, gravel and some sand roads forever, but they still need maintenance, because they're, they get rutted.
And what happens is the town actually does the work. They do it at the quality level that the town wants, and they, well, they contract it out.
They contract it out, right.
But they are the ones that are managing the process, as opposed to homeowners that either aren't there or they're not experts in that area. And it is a five-year period that the commitment is for doing this.
Yes. And then at the end of five years, we can recalculate.
See how it goes and then come back and.
That's correct. The, I can't think what I was going to say. We looked at trying to go for a full-blown fix, and this ongoing maintenance is what's best for the area. Oh, I know what I was going to say. There's actually a state law that they could do this on their own. So what we're doing is providing a service, a little level of service, in that residents on a road, three residents on a road may band together and establish a, have a meeting, have a, develop a program, and require all to pay. So this is not just something we invented, this is actually a state law, goes back probably 120 years. What we're providing is a service of, we'll do some, help them with the oversight, they'll have a committee that will make sure that they're getting what we all agree to, and then the town, through the tax rolls, through betterment, will collect the funds to do this work.
The only other question I had is, I saw 65, you have to have at least 65%.
Well, you have to have three people.
Only three people, so.
We've set the bar that at least, you know, well over 50% of people should participate.
It's with 37. It would be 37 taxpayers, right?
But two were private parking lots.
Okay.
Rick, did you hear this?
Me too. Thank you, Mr. Chair. You've mentioned, and you say in your documents, you've gone before the Conservation Commission, you have an orders of conditions. Were those, were there's a lot of stuff required by Conservation Commission, or is it pretty straightforward?
No, I had filed notice of intent, oh, probably a year and a half ago, okay? And they were approved by DEP. I have an order of conditions. I have a DEP number posted on this poll.
Okay.
And have been maintaining the roads right along, but the tide of pounding on Jews asking for money are supplementing.
Gotcha. So the other question I had then is, I'm a little confused as to who's going to be overseeing this. Is the clerk of the works going to be a DPW person, or is it going to be one of them?
Bills will be submitted to the town. The town will make sure the work was done.
Okay.
And the town will be issuing the betterment, so the change, the money will come into the town. The committee will just be sure that they're getting what the whole program was set up to go do, so that, you know, the town doesn't use the money on another road down the way or we don't forget to do it.
That's the thought.
Yeah.
Okay, so, but there will be, so the clerk of the works overseeing is DPW person?
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Just ladies, welcome. Question I have is, out of the remaining 35%, were there many people who were objecting to it specifically about this and complaining at all, or?
There's many people, this program is, we've started this almost three years ago now, three years in January, and there's consistently been people who want the road fixed but have chosen not to contribute. So the 65% have basically picked up the tab for everybody, and we have supplemented the difference, if need be, for filings and hearings and whatever.
I only ask that because down the road, I would potentially anticipate people complaining to the town, and the town's going to have to take that issue.
Right, I'm sure there's going to be people. And I'm sure that the same people that didn't choose to participate in the past three years.
What you're doing is great. I've talked to you before in the past, two years ago, about this, and you've come to the point where this is a great opportunity, not just for Old Mouth, but also for other roads, which gets me to Al. Potentially, if more and more roads, or people who live on these private roads come under this, is it potential that these costs that you're projecting now could potentially go down? I mean, if we're going to contract it out, sub it out, is it something that maybe, long-term, if we get more and more roads, that we can actually do it within-house?
That's possible.
And lower the cost?
We don't have the proper equipment for this particular type of grading, but that's the move that we go in. I think the, depends on the area. This area is fairly isolated from some of the other areas. If many roads on Elmarock wanted to go this way, however, then obviously there's an easier way to.
Is it primarily with a grader that you're going to be using to grade it, and then put down the material, and then spread it out, and then compact it?
Right.
So potentially with all?
The gentleman that's been doing it has been grading it with what's there.
Yeah.
He said there's really no need to add fill, which was one of the biggest objections from conservation and DEP. So they've been grading it up really well, and then leveling it, and then hitting it with a roller. The last time he did not, he didn't feel it was necessary, but the time before, he did.
Right.
And it's lasted the longest in a very long time, so.
Reason why I say is, because you're really, as you say, the poster child for future, and we have a number of private roads with so many residents that live on it, and if it's dealing with a grader and a potential compactor, I mean, it's something that the DEP might consider in the future, providing it's economical to actually.
They use the same contractor. He belongs to a big forum in Hannover. Okay, he has consistently done the roads, been very agreeable. We've negotiated a price with him, and he's done a wonderful job for us.
I do have one question, and I don't know if Al, you, down the road, we do need some kind of major repair because of the erosion problem as well. There is one section that's eroding along our riverfronts, and that's something we'd like the town to help us come to. If we have to end up paying for it ourselves, it's very, very, very expensive. Maybe the town could work something out and pay part of it, or help us get to that, because it's going to end our access if the erosion continues. It's right where the.
It's right along the riverbank.
I'm sure Al will be more than willing to.
Al has seen it, he knows.
And we met with Conservation, it's about a five-year process to get the DEP to agree to basically armor the bank, but it's what was done underneath the bridges years back.
Right.
So it's, it's on the horizon, something to look at.
Motion, Mr. Chair? Pardon, motion? No?
Oh, sorry, question. You said, when I talked to you earlier, Al, so if all the people aren't onboard with this, they're going to have to pay, unlike before, when these residents, just want to be clear, everyone pays, goes on their tax bill like a, like a water bill or something like that.
And just reiterate, it's $125 a year.
Right.
So it's not a enormous amount that some of the other betterments have been.
Good.
Move the board of selectmen vote to adopt orders, plans, and estimates for the assessments of betterments for the purpose of making annual repairs to Old Mouth Road, Oceanfront Street, Court Street, Dreamway, Caesar Way, and a section of River Street from Alden to Old Mouth, not to exceed $22,000 over five years.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Unanimous. Good luck with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're going to do the contractor? 12A?
That's different.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Al, you can stay up there.
It's now 7:30 or shortly thereafter. We, we had an earlier presentation, number nine, Route 3A roundabout landscape plan. We also have 7:30 interviews, treasurer collector's position. I think we're going to have to do the treasurer's collector's position, since that's scheduled at 7:30, and then we'll go back to the roundabout. And I apologize to the roundabout people, but that's what happens. Okay? What we're going to do, we will take the, we have two candidates for treasurer this What we'll do is take them alphabetically. Pam Avetabaly is here, and if Pam would come up and introduce herself to the board. I know Pam is being the assistant.
Hi, Pam. Pleased to meet you.
Pleased to meet you.
Pam, good to see you again.
Hi, Pam, nice meeting you.
Hi, Sean Harris. Nice to meet you.
Pam, if you'd just take a chair at the table there. Pam is, well, she'll tell you, she's the assistant treasurer in Duxbury, but I'll give you, Pam, an opportunity, give the board some of your background, anything you'd like to say, and.
Is the other, before we go, is the other interviewee in here?
Yes, she's out in the hall.
Okay, yeah, great.
Okay, yes, I've worked at the town in Duxbury. It was a year this past February as the assistant treasurer. Before Duxbury, I was in Norwell. I have a son that was giving me a hard time, so I quit a very professional job. I have an accounting background, so I decided to stay home, and I saw this ad in the paper for a municipality in Norwell, part-time account payable administrator. So I took it. I was there a little while. The assistant town accountant and the town accountant were having issues, so they gave me, the selectman gave me the assistant town accountant job. Unfortunately, I couldn't keep it, because the way the union works, the senior most qualified person had to get it, and that was a dispatcher. So I saw this full-time job in Duxbury come up as a treasurer. I thought, well, you know, accounting background, we'll go for it. So I went there, and I love it. I think my boss knows I'm a little overly qualified for the job. He's given me a lot of his responsibilities. Although I'm an assistant treasurer, I do do a lot of the collection part of it also. He's involved me in all aspects of the job. I haven't, I've just started to get involved in some borrowing. I feel as though my accounting background has really pushed me so, to make it mesh. It's really been a great opportunity. Municipality government is definitely different than the private sector. I'm a Bentley graduate. I continue to go to Bentley. I hope to have my PhD soon. I have a couple classes left. But I'd like to come to Situate, because I want to better myself. I want a higher position. I think now that I've had the background, I've completed two years of schooling at the treasure collector school. I hope to be certified soon. Unfortunately, the process is very slow. I'd love to try to take the test now and see if I could pass it, but that's not an issue. You have to go to school for at least six years before you can take the test. So that's pretty much where I stand now.
Thank you. If the board has any questions, I'm sure they do. We thank you for applying, first of all. And I'll open it up to the board. Any questions, comments? John?
Welcome, first and foremost. In your present position, how many people do you manage?
I am the assistant treasurer, so I have one person that is, that I supervise.
When you were in the town of Norwell, what was, how many people did you manage there?
Two others, two other bookkeepers.
Because obviously you're going to be managing a whole office, so I'm just trying to get a sense of like your experience with managing people and personnel.
Yeah.
Especially in your private practice.
Right, in the private sector, I was the accounts, I was the manager, controller for Signant Electronics. So I had twenty people under me at that point.
Forgive me, how many years did you, how many?
I worked there for about seven years. Yeah, and that process was when my son was starting to give me a tough time.
Challenges.
Yes.
That's what I always say.
And full-time was, my husband also works a lot of hours. And it was, you know, one of us had to make the sacrifice and I decided to stay home with him. Now, thankfully, he's nineteen and signed up to go in the army November sixteenth. Here's hoping. It'll be the best thing for him. And me too.
Any other questions?
Just maybe I can tag it. So just so I get the timeframe right, in, in May of 'oh six is when, is that when you were working for that electronic company?
Yes.
And that's when you had more management responsibilities?
Correct.
And then you started working part-time a couple of months after that?
Yes.
Fifteen hours a week, you went to Norwell?
Right.
And you were an interim town accountant?
Right, correct.
Then you became the accounts payable manager in Norwell? And that's when you became the assistant treasurer of Duxbury after that?
Yeah, in Norwell for a short period of time, I worked part-time. And then I was given the opportunity to be the assistant town accountant. Loved it, was actually taught a lot, got involved a lot in the town. The selectmen actually went to bat for me against the union to try to get me to be able to stay full-time. But unfortunately, they went through the whole process and ended up losing the way the contract was. Norwell has since changed their contract and they said it's because they lost me. So that's a little pat on the back.
Well, you made the transition from the town accountant to the town treasurer. And here, they're, they're really two different roles.
Oh, yeah.
So how did you do that transit, how did that transition work? And how did you get the knowledge base from one to the other? Did you find that difficult or what?
I, I really didn't find it difficult. I mean, I certainly didn't step in and know what everything I was doing, absolutely not. And it is a learning process, absolutely. But I think because of my background and I catch on pretty quick. My boss also spent a lot of time with me. He's been in the field for a long time. At that time, too, he had a problem with the collector, so he was actually spending a lot of time with me, teaching me both sides, both sides of a coin. I was, you know, I spend a lot of time, too, when I, I know you just met me, but because of my background, when I take on a responsibility, I really give it a hundred percent. So I started with the manuals. I took a couple of classes on my own. And I really, you know, I think the accounting background really helps, really helps. I mean, and it's a little bit different on the treasurer's side, but not, not a heck of a lot different.
Well, municipal government's accounting is much different than
Oh, absolutely.
than the private sector. So who is the actual treasurer? I mean, through all the years you've been the assistant, so you've had someone to kind of rely on for some expertise.
Right.
Obviously, stepping up to this position, you'd be the person that other people come to to look for the expertise. So that's, you know, that's obviously a big challenge for you. Who's the actual treasurer of Duxbury now?
Tom Connolly is the treasurer now in Duxbury. And I think if you seriously ask him, I do a lot of what he does. I think he's given me more responsibilities because he knows that I like a challenge and I like to learn. So I'm constantly taking on new projects and.
So he's one, is he one of your reference, or one, someone we could use as a reference for you?
He's my boss.
Okay.
Yeah, I, you could definitely call him, just with the understanding of, he really, I don't think wants to let me go. So I'm really, I'd rather, you know it unless you're very serious about it. Because I'll have to go back to work for him after. And I've kept this kind of quiet from him, you know.
Hopefully he doesn't live in Situate.
Well, I'm sure he knows.
Ninety percent of the people are watching this show right now.
Yeah.
Not really. The only other question I had was in terms of your certification, and you touched on that a little bit. You've taken two years' worth of the process.
Treasurer's school, correct.
So how much more is left?
Well, you have to take three years of treasurer's school and three years of collector's school. Unfortunately, they don't let you do that. It's just a year-by-year basis. And they only offer it this one week in August. So, you know, I only have two years, but I've only been in the treasurer collector's office two years, so.
So it's a, it's a week-long course?
It is.
So you've taken that for the last two years?
Correct.
You've got one more year of treasurer and then three years of collector.
Correct.
Now, Tricia, what's the impact of that on a treasurer in town? You can be a town treasurer and not be certified?
Absolutely, and the statute provides if you become certified, you're eligible for an additional thousand dollars in compensation a year. But you can hire one without the certification. But obviously, somebody who's going through the process, it's a measure of their devotion and commitment to the position.
Right. Good, I'll let someone else.
Sean? Rick can go first.
No, go ahead, Sean.
You live nearby, I take it, Norwell, Hanover, something like that?
I actually live in Pembroke, on the Pembroke-Duxbury line.
I just was curious, you know, how much time could you put into this position?
I, my normal hour, work hours, I've never been my normal work hours. Usually, I don't start work until eight o'clock at Duxbury. I'm usually the first one there to open the doors. I usually get in about seven. And in our busy season, our beach sticker season, our taxes, I'm there anywhere between. We get out at four, I'm usually there until about six o'clock. I'm at the time in my life where I can now go back to a professional job and give it the time that it needs. And I'm willing to do that. Like I said, my responsibilities at home have definitely coming to an end. And I'm looking forward to being.
Let me know how that works out. I might send my daughter, so I have an eighteen-year-old daughter.
Yes, good luck. He's been a handful for a long time.
What about Fridays, regular day, no problem working?
No, I don't have a regular, a problem working a regular day. If it needs to be, I'll be here.
All right.
In other words, there are no restrictions on your hours?
No, absolutely not, no.
Richard, all set?
Yep, my question was asked.
Have you seen, looked at our capital plan or anything?
I have. I've done a lot of investigating on Situate. Situate and Duxbury are a lot alike. You know, Duxbury, last year's town census was fifteen thousand. You guys have eighteen thousand. We're a seacoast community, just like you. I mean, we have those issues where, I do go to the selectmen meetings every once in a while. We do have the same issues with roads and the coast. We have beach stickers, we have shellfish, we have moor rings. We have the same thing that goes on here, so.
You've done bonding?
I have. I've done a little bit of bonding. I haven't done a lot of borrowing. I just really started getting into borrowing. Duxbury's just got their triple-A rating, actually, we were just told last Thursday. I was involved in that process, which was huge, it was great, and.
Do you know what ours is?
Yours is also a triple-A, right?
Oh, in.
It's double.
Double A, right?
It's a double. Just chess.
Or B double.
It's a double A.
Oh, you're B double A? Oh, I thought you were triple A.
That's all right.
Just a trick question.
We will be.
We want to be triple.
Well, I can help.
Good answer, great answer. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Further discussion from the board, from the floor, any questions? Pam, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity.
Our anticipation is to, is to make a vote later on this evening.
Okay.
Tricia will call you one way or the other tomorrow.
Yep.
Okay?
All right, thank you.
Have a good night, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again for applying.
Thanks, all right, thanks again.
Is anybody else cold?
We could, you want to shut that off?
I'll get it.
Done, I think. No, maybe it's.
Are you? I can't reach it. I'd have to stand on my chair.
Would someone ask?
I'll get her.
Paula?
Think someone.
Thank you.
Kind of hot now.
Put it back on.
I'm standing on my tiptoes right now.
On box two.
What's that? Yeah, I need my hockey stick.
Paula, how are you?
Good, thanks, how you doing?
Fine, thank you. Paula Neers is the treasurer of Bridgewater. Again, I've also known Paula over the years since she came to Bridgewater. And we thank you very much for applying.
Thank you.
What we did with the other candidate is we just asked her to just give us a brief update on your background and why you applied, that type of thing, and then the board will ask a few questions.
Sure. My career actually started out in information systems. I did that for the better part of fifteen years, mostly in consulting. And I worked, I had my own business for a while with my husband. And I just started developing a greater interest in what was going on in my town. And that's when I started getting more involved. And then when the business was kind of winding down, I figured it was a, it made for a nice career change for me because I'd always been interested in numbers and finance and even in information systems. I did a lot of work with numbers, working on general ledgers and, and for banks and whatnot. So so far, I've liked it a lot. It's been pretty challenging in Bridgewater. There's a lot of change going on there. And I think Situate would be a nice, a nice move for me right now where it's a, it's a little bit more stable. The staff, like I said, there's been, there's been a lot of change in Bridgewater here. It seems to be more experienced and can help give me the room I need to, to grow and develop to my potential as a treasure collector. And I've been taking all the classes at Amherst to do what I can to get the education background that I need to do that. And working hard.
Can you expand just on that a little bit? Where are you in the process?
As far as.
Are you certified?
No, I've taken all the classes I need for the treasurer's side.
So you've gone three years?
Three years, yeah.
Okay.
So I'm, I am eligible to take the exam in August.
Okay.
And I've taken about ten of the classes on the collector's side. So hopefully, a year or two after that, I could do the collector exam.
So you have a little bit more on the collector's side?
Right, I focused on the treasurer's side because that's where Bridgewater needed the, the extra help at, at the time.
And I, I think I was missing page one of your resume.
Yeah.
Can you just run through the, unless you have it there, I can save it.
Yeah, I just have my copy.
Thanks.
I see it's double-sided.
So that's what you're saying, for four years you worked, the Senna South is, was the company?
Senna, south of Boston, yeah.
Right, and then you transitioned in two thousand and ten up to the town of Bridgewater?
Correct.
And what position did you start out there?
In Bridgewater?
Yeah.
I was elected as treasurer and tax collector.
Oh, that's right, it's an elected, I'm sorry, I got the two.
It's no longer, but that's.
So you got elected as the treasurer?
And collector, yeah.
And collector, and now, how is it now? Now it's appointed by the selectman?
Yes, my term was up in April, and so in the same election, they made it appointed positions.
Okay, and did they reappoint you?
I kind of default appointment it now because the town manager left. There's an interim town manager. We're kind of waiting for the new town manager to come in.
And I see you have some IT background as well. That's the consulting stuff that you did?
Correct.
So some of the questions that we asked, have you done bond, do you do a lot of bonding?
We've been doing a lot lately, a lot of refunding and community preservation. There was a couple of purchases for that. We're getting into the enterprise funds more. There was, there was almost ten million dollars or so that was authorized last year. So we need to, to make a move on that, get the green light letters and move forward with a lot of that.
So who does your bonding? You do it, you do it through, do you have a different company that?
The Bond Council is Edwards-Wellman and financial advisor is Unibank.
Are you done?
Yeah, go ahead, I'm just.
I'm watching, you're just kind of like. How many people have you managed right now with the town of Bridgewater?
There are three people.
Three people.
My side, my side.
So, and I'm just looking at, because I didn't have the benefit, as Mr. Murray had mentioned. For all intents and purposes, you've been dealing with, obviously, experience with accounting up until about two thousand and ten. Two thousand and ten is rarely when you got involved in municipal government?
Correct.
Okay. And just, have you looked at our long-range plan or capital plan, you know, for the town at all? Situate, in other words, with, with the duties of the treasurer? Have you looked at what we have, what we're trying to do?
I know you've got a lot of things coming up.
Yep.
I focus more on the charter, I've seen the differences on how things work there and read the last town administrator's report with some of the issues that are going on with.
Do you have restrictions on hours? In other words, have you seen the, the hours of the town?
No, you're late on Tuesday night and early on Fridays.
And do you have problems with that?
No.
And outside of that, those are my questions. Thank you.
Rick?
What do you think would be your biggest challenge? I mean, you're, you, Bridgewater's, what's the population of Bridgewater?
Twenty-seven thousand.
Twenty-seven thousand?
Mm-hmm.
And what do you think your biggest challenge would be coming here to Situate? With what we're trying to do and how that meshes with your background and all that sort of stuff?
Well, I mean, obviously, I don't mind taking on new things because it's kind of a, a bit of a career jump. But there are things that are different. And reading through your charter, we have a school district in Bridgewater, which has its own challenges, but it would be different. You've got the, more employees to deal with when you have, it's not a regional school district. I know you've got a lot of borrowing coming up and a lot of financial planning. That's the kind of thing that I'm looking to get into. More of the long-range planning, more of the financial forecasting, that kind of thing. I took a little bit of that in college. But that's really kind of where I wanted to, to get involved. That's why I decided to run. It's because I saw things like going on and I had different ideas from, from my background and my education. And I just wanted to be a part of it. I don't necessarily think I'm going to, I mean, just to be a part of it and put my two cents into it and to learn and grow.
Now, you've got, you've got some IT background as well and working in that.
Yeah, most of my, yeah, it's about fifteen years of it.
How do you think we're doing on that or what opportunities do you see are there things we could do better that you would be interested in or any? And if the answer's no, that's fine, too, I'm just.
I mean, I haven't really looked at what Situate per se is doing with their IT, but there's always room for improvement, for business process analysis. I've found some of that with Bridgewater as well. What I find, I've talked to some of the software companies because I'd like to, to see a change in Bridgewater. The whole customer relationship management aspect of it, I don't see anyone really tackling that. So that, you know, from a treasure collector's standpoint, you've got somebody in front of you. You want to know what their relationship is to town. You don't want to be talking about, say, like a small excise tax bill for their son's car when you've got, you know, somebody who's got a lot of businesses in town. You want to know what that person is to the community. That's the piece that I see missing in a lot of the software. But I don't, I don't know that it's. Yeah, sure.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chair. Just one more quick question. You live in Bridgewater?
Correct.
Why do you want to leave? What, what are you looking for in terms of change? I mean, it's a big position in a bigger town.
Right.
Right around the corner from your house, probably. What's drawing you to Situate?
I want to be a full-time treasure collector, to be honest with you. I mean, I think there's, we're things, we're very understaffed and I'm finding my. I mean, I think there's, we're things, we're very understaffed and I'm finding myself doing a lot of assistant-type work. And I wanna get into more of the, the five-year plans, the capital plans, the forecasting, and be involved in that aspect of it. Because that's the piece I need to, to learn and grow and to get the certification. I'm gonna need to do more of that stuff and not submitting bills and that kinda stuff.
It's a full-time position now, but you have to do the secondary work?
In Bridgewater, it's more than a full-time position, yeah. There's, there's only three people and there's, the staff is smaller in Bridgewater than it is in here.
So you'd have to resign your position there? Is that right?
I would be, yeah.
John?
And how much time would you typically give them? Two weeks, a month?
Notice?
Yeah.
It would be two weeks, I would think, yeah.
Great. Any questions for us?
I'm good.
Questions for the board? Anything from the, from the audience? Uh, okay, Paula, we're gonna be reaching a decision later on this evening. As we told you, other candidates, Trish will call tomorrow, notify everyone tomorrow on our decision. But again, thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you.
I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paula.
Uh, next, we've been waiting a long. We're gonna go to the seven-thirty round, uh, the roundabout discussion that we, that we had to...
I just saw Al walk by.
I think Al, I saw Jim Cantwell a moment ago, so I think they're both out there. Thank you, fellas, for all, for waiting. Welcome, everybody.
Good evening, again.
Good evening, how are you?
Fine, thank you. Um, we're here for what I think is a very good topic, which is to discuss the roundabout.
Al, if you'll just take one moment and introduce our, our guest, we'd appreciate it very much.
Um, actually, I...
I'm sure everybody knows both of them, but...
I'm pretty much the guest here, but Chris Kennedy is, is going to be the spokesperson for this topic. And of course, you're familiar with Representative Cantwell, who was one of the key drivers in helping Chris bring this topic to the point that it is today. And the, the topic is the Situate Roundabout. Um, as you remember, when it was being built back in 'oh-six and even before that, there was a lot of consternation about the roundabout would be a big disaster for traffic. And since that time, we've had a lot of comments, positive comments about the Situate Roundabout. In fact, aiding in the flow of traffic in that area. Uh, it hasn't impeded trucks. Uh, we haven't had accidents, there've been, uh, no accidents with injury at that roundabout, to my knowledge, unlike when we had multiple intersections and the traffic lights. The one complaint we have had is that it's ugly as can be. And so that's where I'll turn now to Mr. Kennedy, who wants to do something about that.
Gentlemen, thank you. Um, my name's Chris Kennedy of Kennedy's Country Gardens. And basically, this all started with my dad, who's had a business in town here for fifty-two years. And, uh, for a while, and he, he's retired now, but he was driving back and forth from Florida and he would drive into the state of Massachusetts and be somewhat disappointed with the, the appearance of the roadsides. And we've been involved with different beautification projects throughout the years. That's pretty much what we do for our business. But, um, the roundabout seemed to be a good opportunity to have an example of something we can do across the state and hopefully, Situate can be one. Actually, I had met previously with the Mass Highway Commissioner back with Frank Hines way back a few years, and, um, we talked about this idea as a state project and hopefully, this will be an example of something we can do. And one of the things that we, we thought had to happen was we needed to have an incentive to have a beautiful area and have it, um, kept well for years to come. So my thought is, well, let's put someone's name on it. And I was happy to be the person to step up to do so. And in this situation, I hope it's gonna be a win-win. Um, if it's not a win-win, it doesn't seem to work. So our goal is to, hopefully, if people see it, drive around, it looks beautiful, then hopefully, they'll think to, um, instead of going to maybe a mass merchant or hardware store, they might come to a local business, family business, and buy their mums or whatever there. Um, and in exchange, we're gonna beautify the town for many years to come. And the thought process is that we had done this in different places. The conditions are very difficult. It's wide open and windy, hot, sunny, dry, road salt and pollution. Um, it's not easily accessible, low maintenance. And I should add that, um, there's a lot of rules and regulations to deal with, including safety and so forth. So, um, there are some obstacles we need to overcome. But our plan is to remove the existing weeds and grass and add compost. Um, uh, we've had some people that are willing to donate some things, like Lion's Head Organics and Cohasset. They'll, they're willing to give us some compost. And some mulch from Gold Green in Situate, and some grass seed from Pearls Premium. And hopefully, lots of beautiful but low-maintenance plants to minimize weeds on unnecessary care. Um, we've done, I've had the opportunity to do an island in Marshfield, the Summer Street Island, which we get some comments on. We donated the plants for that, and previously, that was an eyesore. And, um, very similar situation. Um, it's kind of in the wide open and it's a low-maintenance situation. But we've managed to, uh, keep the, keep the island looking good with help from, um, one of the garden clubs in Marshfield, who's done a great job helping us. Um, but these are some of the plants we've used. One of the things we have a problem with in the, in the roundabout is the height. So I'm, I'm able to use different heights in some of these photographs I'm showing. We may not have that ability, but we hope to maybe add some more height later if they allow us to do so. Um, this is the train crossing in front of the DPW, and we've done some of the work there as well. This was not volunteer work, but, um, you know, we were, we were, these are very difficult circumstances, so we're trying to use plant material that's gonna live. And if they can live in these situations, we're hoping that they can do the same here. This is one of the drawings that I've done. Um, and actually, uh, I left some space in the middle for hopefully, future expansion. So the, um, Department of Transportation right now would prefer that we don't do anything permanent in the means of, you know, of, of, like, a pole in the middle that might have a sail or something fun that maybe we can do someday, or a boat. Um, idea of mossing boats, fishing boats, that type of thing. We had some thoughts of using, um, but we wanna prove that we can maintain these for a few years and then we're gonna go back and possibly, um, you know, add some ideas to this. And I'd like to use a boat as a planter or that type of thing, just to add a little bit more visual appeal. Um, and just some of the plants we're talking about using, the switchgrass, which is a native grass, very reliable, comes back year after year and has some burgundy in it, which is pretty, especially this time of the year. Um, this is some hyssop that seems to bloom all summer and all fall for me in my yard, and some indigo that blooms really early. Um, this is another native plant called Ansonia, or Blue Star. Beautiful, um, flowers, but also exceptional foliage and gorgeous in the fall. And that's one of the goals, is to make it look like a nice New England planting. Um, catmint, which we use around town quite a bit, and it's just a good long bloomer. Um, an early bloomer that, which stays low is called Dianthus Firewich. And maybe we'll mix in some more burgundies and plenty of annuals. And the idea with many of these things is they'll come back and fill up a lot of that space so we don't have weeds to grow. But also, we can change the colors from year to year and add some annuals that bloom the entire season. Um, and one of the other things I thought of is that, uh, one of the challenges we have is mowing it. And DPW, since Al and their team have stepped up, the island looks a whole lot better because, uh, they basically have, you know, adopted the site. If I can reduce the amount of mowing, that would even be better. So I could use ground covers like this, where basically, we just have to go in and weed it once in a while, but not necessarily have to mow it from week to week. And hopefully, I'll be able to expand how big of an area I can actually plant. Um, and these are a couple of the ground covers that I'm suggesting to use. And that's my son planting a tree, um, in front of Town Hall here, and we're hoping to get going.
Great. Chris, thank you. Jim, would you like to add anything? I know you were very helpful in this whole process and we as a town appreciate it very much as usual.
Sure, I'd be very brief, Mr. Chairman, but I know you've had a long meeting already. Uh, but I just wanted to, one, thank the board and the town administrator, Trish Van Casey, for really being behind this throughout and giving the support to Al. Because this, uh, project, I know Chris had started this before I came in, and it was one of the earliest conversations that we had with how this is really a gateway for Situate. And Chris has been offering now for some four and a half, five years to be the person that would take care of it and make sure that it would be beautified. And I can tell you through the process, Chris, that you educated me through the process, a number of state officials who you presented to, who are seeing this as a win-win because the state DOT doesn't have the funds to do this kinda beautification, to have local business leaders come to the forefront and say, we wanna make sure this first thing that many people see coming into Situate is going to be properly, uh, beautiful, aesthetically beautiful. And we do hope down the line of having something that could be either a fishing boat or a mossing boat, something in the middle that would bring some attention to our heritage. But I did wanna thank Chris for his time and for putting this tremendous effort and knowing it'll be a great deal of work for you to do, Chris. By the way, as I said, Chris and I, not only is he a business leader, but we coached baseball together years ago. So I've known him many, many years and know he's just an outstanding person and will do a great job. And Al, thank you for, for really the work we, with your leadership and with Trish. We met with DOT officials a few months ago to say this was gonna be a, a main priority. This board wanted to see some action, and I appreciate your giving the discretion and the, uh, the opportunity for all of us to work together to make it happen. So thanks for your time.
Thank you, Jim. From the board, comments?
Yeah, I just wanna say, Chris, thank you, you know. Uh, so that people understand, you know, we've been getting comments all the time. Jim, you've worked so well, I mean, for the Department of Transportation, long and short of it, it's about time. And I, I mean, you've been trying to do this for a number of years and, uh, you know, I think it's really unique. We have a partnership with a, a Situate business that's stepping up to the plate saying, we'd like to do this. It's not gonna cost the town anything, it's gonna beautify the town. And just the local businesses, as you referenced, participating in this. So it's a collective partnership and, um, it's exciting. Finally, people can finally see the progress. And just again, commend, uh, Representative Cantwell for, for sticking in there and trying to get DOT to finally relinquish to let us do it through the, um, MBTA to, to do this. So it's exciting and it's nice. Thanks.
Thank you.
Rick?
Yeah, you know, I think we started this back in 'oh-eight. Cause I was chair at the time. And we, the MBTA wouldn't let us talk about it until the Green Bush project was accepted and signed off because the rotary was all part of the Green Bush project. So every little thing up in Hingham and every little thing up in Quincy and every little railing had to be signed off on by the MBTA. And then it just went through laboratories. Those people that think the wheels of government turn slowly, they do, but they, they do turn. And this outcome here is fantastic for all the reasons that y'all articulated and John just articulated as well. So, Chris, thanks for stepping up. And Jim, as you said, you know, thank you so much for your work on pushing this through. This is, this is great. And, uh, you know, it's taken a while, but this is perfect. Thank you.
Tony?
I'll just add, uh, Jim, you know, again, uh, every issue that comes before the town of Situate, you always stand behind us, you help it get through. Like Rick mentioned, sometimes it's slower than we, we'd like it to be, but you're, you're always there behind us. And I wanna thank you personally for that. And I wanna, the fifteen people that are watching, you know, there's an election coming up in a couple of days. And just let everybody know that Jim does a great job for this community and we really do appreciate it. Chris, you know, it's, you're very generous. You know, it's a big piece of property there, it's money, it's time, and it's, it's, uh, you know, very generous of you to take it on. Um, you know, who knows what, what you'll reap in terms of sales, but I don't think that's the goal. I think your goal is really to take a piece of property and show what you do. And anybody that knows, uh, obviously, you haven't been as Rick Kennedy is, but if you look at the landscaping right out in front of his place, it's flawless. He makes that house across the street look like, uh... But, uh, I know it's gonna look great because, you know, you just look at the work that you do right there. So thank you for your generosity.
I, I got a question.
If I could.
Go ahead.
So some of your pictures showed, and I know we've talked about signs and I know from my previous involvement that there's, there's regulations in height and all this sort of stuff. But regarding a sign, at some point, if there's something we could do about that, maybe we could work with some other businesses and so on to help on that. Because it would be, it would be nice to at least get a nice sign there, you know.
They're, they're supposed to provide, the, uh, Department of Transportation is supposed to provide it as part of a adopt-a-plot type program that they already have in place. So we're hoping that that's gonna...
Okay.
...fall into place as, because there are a lot of restrictions and they'll, they actually are harder to bring outside companies in. I think they actually wanna funnel you into using some of their preferred vendors, so to speak. But we'll certainly keep you up to speed.
We're very excited by this.
If we have to jump a hoop.
Again, as we said, I certainly am not gonna repeat it. Uh, thank you all for all you've done.
Motion, Mr. Chair?
Please.
Move the board's select and vote to accept the offer of Kennedy's Country Gardens to plant and maintain landscaping in the center of the Green Bush Roundabout.
Second?
Further discussion? Here seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's the end.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Chris.
Al, I believe we're gonna do the paving contract now.
One more brief topic from me and then I'll get out of your way. Um, there is, this request that you sign a contract with a second bidder for the asphalt paving contract, uh, the low bidder has been somewhat unresponsive and we want to have two paving contractors in our kit so that we can move forward on paving roads. We were delayed in August significantly by, uh, the incumbent contractor who kept pushing back, pushing back the schedule and to the point that we're now bumping up against schools. They have responded aggressively in the last two days before school started, so we've paved, uh, been able to pave in front of the Jenkins School. But we're disappointed in that we haven't been able to close up the other roads that we opened up early so we could get paved and closed before school started. The second bidder, TL Edwards, uh, has a price that's less than three tenths of a percent higher than the first bidder, so we're not looking at an expenditure of the town's money unwisely. It's just that we think having the two contractors on hand, we will be able to, um, uh, move more quickly on paving roads. So we'd like to award, uh, a second contract for asphalt paving to TL Edwards of Avon, Massachusetts.
Discussion from the board?
Because we're not going with the, I guess this is probably directed toward you, Trish, with the lowest bidder. There's a difference of thirteen thousand dollars. We're not under any obligation to go with the lowest bidder, are we? Is there like a...
No, there's a termination clause in the contract and this was bid on behalf of numerous towns of M-P, MAPC. So Al and I reviewed the termination requirements and everything's in order.
In other words, that we're not gonna turn around and have, uh, Aggreg turn around and say, well, you didn't take us, so therefore, we wanna...
No.
...sue you or, or, or raise some issues?
John?
Al, since we spoke today, um, whose responsibility was it to raise the structures?
Aggreg. The contractor, the paving contractor.
That's why we had other companies come in to do it. We had one from Hull, we had our own people, we had Russell Tottman out there doing it.
We would rebuild, we, versus Russell Tottman would be rebuilding structures for us, but the adjustments associated with repaving is, uh, the, is part of the contractor's contract. Uh, so they, and they subbed that out so that we're, for instance, you've seen a number of contractors in the last couple of days adjusting structures. Generally, what you can do is if you remove two inches of, of asphalt, uh, you'll find that some of the structures are tilted, some were too low to start with, some were too high. So those kind of adjustments are done by the paving contractor.
Not the, not Edwards, the grinding contractor?
Correct.
Alright.
By the paving contractor.
They, they were just, they were just done, and that was my question. If they weren't ready to come in, then...
Right.
We really can't fault them, and I was as frustrated as you. But if it's, that is also part of their contract...
Yes. Yep.
They're really at fault, in my opinion.
Just, just briefly, Al, I know that we've heard about Aggreg. TL Edwards is the one that we're looking at, correct?
Yes.
So what have they done in the town in the past?
They were a paving contractor last year, for instance.
So for like Tilden and for, um...
Yeah, they did...
Not Stockbridge.
Uh, they did Tilden, um, Curtis, numerous streets, yeah.
One thing I was gonna say...
They also provide an additional service in that before they pave, they come out and walk the streets. Uh, they put, they put down a false center line so that when they pave, um, when they show up to pave, it's ready to go.
One thing I think I talked to you, um, in the past about was the paving's gonna be done during the summer, which is kind of more beneficial because of the heat. I thought Tilden and some of these other streets were done during like the fall, late fall, October, November. Is that a concern that you have, that, you know, they're gonna be doing it during colder seasons where maybe the application...
Absolutely, we don't wanna push, we don't wanna push paving back in the fall. What happens in the fall is that every town gets panicked to get their streets done before the first cold.
So my point is... So my point is, with T.L. Edwards, is that a concern you have, given the fact that their history has been...
No, that wasn't, that wasn't T.L. Edwards. What we did this year was we, because we refunded extra money through the override, we were able to start paving, start our whole roads program earlier this year. And so we had the grinding company, which is T.L. Edwards, different phase of T.L. Edwards. But they came in and did all our grinding in July so that we were ready to pave August 1st. And then we waited three, four weeks for the paver to show up.
I'm happy with them. They got the grinding done in like two days, done, gone.
Yeah.
You said a couple places had been paved by Jenkins and you got a couple done?
Thus far, they have paved, they paved Hollitt Street.
Who's "they"?
Oh, so I'm sorry. You're referring to who you asked...
You just said some stuff got done before school started.
Yes.
Who did that?
Aggregate.
Aggregate did.
Yes, the current contractor paved first, we paved Hollitt Street and we've paved First Parish from the harbor up to, and almost to Stockbridge Road. So we concentrate on getting that done so we wouldn't have kids walking to school and have the pavers work in that area.
So how much of that percentage-wise, is that 20% of the...
Oh, that was probably about 20%. We'll have them, we'll have them wrap up the work they've got and then we'll just switch the new work, the additional work we have, we'll, we'll switch.
Go ahead.
That was my next question. Are we going to continue to do more paving in the town after these roads are done?
Yes, yes. We have streets out on the west end to do. We got some over in the Egypt area to do. We've got numerous streets to pave yet. Mordecai Lincoln, we're going to pave, second half of that.
And do you have a date, much like Rick or John said, a drop dead date that you won't let them pave?
Well, we'll pave up until...
The sooner the better, you know.
Yeah, the sooner the better. You know, we can pave well up until early November. The problem is that you're fighting with all the towns who are scrambling to try to get it done. So the sooner you do it, the more you have control over your schedule. And, you know, it's, you want to grind, adjust, and pave. But you can't do one little street, then the next little street, then the next little street. You bring the grinder in, you want to do three or four or five streets and then have them follow behind paving three or four streets and then go to the next three or four streets. Because part of the cost is just getting the equipment in town.
Motion?
Please.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to sign the contract for asphalt paving with T.L. Edwards of Avon, Massachusetts, at the prices quoted in the response to the, to the request for bids issued by the South Shore Regional Surfaces Consortium through June 2013, with the option to extend for an additional one or two years at the town's sole discretion.
Second?
Our motion has been made and seconded. Further discussion from the board, from the floor? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you, Al.
Thank you.
With the board's permission, I'd like to take a quick two-second break just to run down to the men's room. And I want to be here for the water resource thing, so.
Sure.
And basically, DEP wants things a little bit tougher, and they want things a little different for the protection of the wells versus the protection of the reservoir. There's some really subtle differences between the way they want those two things protected. So what they recommend that towns do is to create districts, a separate district for the wells and a separate one for the tributaries and the reservoir. So that's basically what was done. There's a new map that would be adopted. There are some changes in the regulations because there are these new sub-districts, and that's the gist of what we did. And it's been, the planning board has talked about it. They voted to send it to you all so that you could send it back to us or to the planning board if you decide to do that. There also was a discussion with the Water Resource Committee, which started to be, you know, to become pretty in-depth, and then they wanted a kind of like a red line copy of it showing every single change, which I think we were able to put together and distribute that around. Rick was at that meeting. He got a copy of it, and we're waiting to have another meeting with them. But to get it on the fall town meeting warrant, you know, we need, you know, to have it keep moving forward at this point.
And the purpose of this would be to go forward at a town meeting with the changes?
Yeah, just to put it on the warrant.
To put it on the warrant. So that's what you're really, you're asking.
What we're asking for you to do is to come back up and put a spot on the warrant board, refer it back to the planning board so that we can initiate the public hearing process. Right. I think we've already committed to be back with WRC on the 18th.
Yep.
Yeah.
On the 18th, so working with them as well as the meetings with, publicly meetings, advisory board and so forth.
From the board, discussion.
One question. The map's great. The only question I had was, I know that there's a well that's off of Hollitt Street or near, what is it, near Three Ring?
Hollitt and Country Way.
Oh, and I noticed there's nothing surrounding that. I mean, is that something that maybe we should consider? I mean, it's a well that we're thinking of trying to recreate, bring back online, so to speak, in the future, and I just was curious. Had anybody discussed that or?
I'm pretty sure the reason that's not there is because they're only protecting, you know, zones, wells that are being pumped now. You know, you could certainly add that area in or try to estimate where it's going to be, but I don't know how you'd do it, you know, as far as the area that it's going to draw down from. I don't know how you could do it fast in time for town meeting.
I only say it because it's certainly something going forward. I thought that the town's considering, I know the water department has mentioned it going forward. I think Al's not here, Al's here in the back. It's not in the short term, but maybe midterm, if you will, and I've just, my only reason for saying it going forward, at least to have it there, if it can't happen for town meeting, I would not delay this. That's not my point. But to put it on, to amend it so that we have it in the future would only make sense because then people would realize this is a protected area for obvious reasons, you know, for protecting the water supply.
That could be included if you're going to open it up, that area up, revisit that well, that would be the time to do it then too. Because that would define, I think better to best define the area.
Rick?
Thanks. Yeah, I was at the Water Resource Committee meeting where Laura, Bill and Al and Jim DeBarros presented this, and this is, I think, a step overall in a positive direction to bring us into regulatory compliance and really help on the water withdrawal permit, which as Bill says, you know, that's really the bottom line where we really got to get at here. We did ask, or I did ask, for a red line version, and I do ask them again to, when you are sending this out to us, to this board as well, please make sure you have that red line version so we can see how the changes are, because I want to make really sure that there's no inadvertent, I emphasize the word inadvertent weakening of all the efforts that have gone towards protecting our water resources over the last 15, 20 years. And to that end, what was my point? Oh, yeah. So the map, which is a good map, and one of the members of the Water Resource Commission brought this up, the map is quote unquote "just a map," and it's interpreted, it's subject to interpretation, obviously visually, and so one of the things the Water Resource Commission is going to be looking at is to make sure that the map is backed up by wording in the revised bylaws, such as, you know, 400 feet from this or 200 feet from that type of thing, because people can be looking at a map and blowing it up and the way it gets printed and all this sort of thing. So the map is part of the story, but only part of the story, and the wording rewrites are going to be really where the rubber hits the road. And so we, I've asked them, hopefully, to be able to get this for the special town meeting, and the Water Resources Committee is going to be looking at this. I've asked as our liaison to the Water Resources Committee that they provide the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board their written comments on this so we can weigh their input formally in this process as well. And you can see, I just printed out page one. There are a lot of changes. A lot of these deletions look pretty severe, but they've really just been moved somewhere else, and we really need to be able to look at that because, again, I just want to make really sure we don't have any inadvertent weakening of water protection, not only for what we have now, but as John just said, what we might have in the future as well. So I certainly applaud this effort. It's a great thing for the town, and, you know, as Laura and Bill have mentioned, this is most likely going to strengthen our protection, which is the proper direction to go.
Thank you.
Can I make a point?
Go ahead.
Pick up on what you said, it's an important point. I think Laura's, I think, has done a fantastic job of restructuring 520 so that you're looking at discrete areas and how those areas are defined, as well as what's applicable and what can be allowed within those areas. So 520 is not an easy read on a good day.
Yeah.
Right? And hopefully, when we get finished with this, we'll come back up and Laura, with her wordsmithing capability, will have that straightened out so that you go from section to section and understand it, right? And eliminate any congruity that may exist in the existing ones.
And this is going to, you're going to have public meetings, if I recall, at least one?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Because, you know, when CPC land acquisitions come up and everything and, or other pieces of property, people say, well, this has got, this is going to have benefit to the town water supply, and that just might be someone's opinion until you actually get to this document and you actually see, does it have, does it really have impact on the town water supply or not? So there's a lot of, it's not just a bylaw, I mean, there's a lot of ancillary spinoffs where this is very important, the water withdrawal permit, potential land acquisition, potential uses of trails and, you know, all sorts of things.
Tony?
So I think I understood that right, that you are going to provide us with section by section changes, so we'll understand it when we get to the next step in the process. One thing on the map, it said we're adding six acres of more protection to the watershed. I couldn't figure out where that was on the map. And maybe, you know, is it the difference between the green line and the blue line? And I don't need that right now, we'll go through that, but if we can get that in the process also, so that it's very clear on the map where the expansion is occurring?
I can drop off some maps with Cam that show where that is.
And the only other thing I read here that I was a little bit surprised of is that they want to remove the prohibitions from swimming and boating in the surface water supply. So that means that you'd be able to swim and boat in our reservoir, in our water reservoir, is that correct?
It doesn't, it sounds like that, but actually, the way it's, the reason why that's being recommended to be done is that right now, because that's in zoning, that means that the building department has to enforce that, and they're not here 24/7, whereas if it's in a town bylaw or if it's, you know, done by signs at the water department, then the police and, you know, the water division people are there all the time.
So we're thinking about just changing it from a bylaw to?
Change, what in effect the change does is allows enforcement, right, to prohibit it.
Okay. But we are still going to prohibit people from swimming in the reservoir?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
Just one last question for you. I noticed that you got Zone A and Zone 2. Is, the reason why I'm looking at Zone A and then I'm saying, assuming then wouldn't there be presumably Zone B? I saw the bylaws, or the proposal, and then I see Zone 2 presupposes that there's a Zone 1. Is that just something you're trying to put in conformity so it would be, if you're going to have Zone A, then shouldn't it be Zone B? Or is Zone 1 versus Zone 2? Or, I'm just only saying, because now you've got A and then you're going to numbers, numerical, Roman numeral numbers.
There's not, not total logic to this, but the surface water has the letters and the wells have the numbers, and the surface water people want you to protect immediately adjacent, you know, up to 200 feet around the tributaries and 400 feet around the reservoir. And the well people have an area immediately around the well, which is a Zone 1, which is 400 square feet, and that's, you know, you can't do anything in that area. And then they have the Zone 2, which is the area of drawdown, and that's where they want to regulate because, and the Zone 2 includes the Zone 1, it's just a larger area. But with the, with the surface water, they don't regulate out beyond the 200 or 400 feet.
No prob, I was just wondering, would you want to put like a footnote just to say this is the reason, so people don't say, wait, we're Zone 1 and we're Zone 2? You know, I mean, anyway, I'm just only suggesting it for continuity purposes to understand it for people who, laypeople who read this and say, wait a minute, am I missing something here? Anyway, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion for the board? Motion, love it.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to refer zoning bylaw changes, parentheses, Water Resource Protection District, to the Planning Board for their review and recommendations, and further that space be reserved for the special town meeting warrant for these articles.
Motion been made and seconded. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you both.
Very much.
Joe, can I ask a question to Al on a related topic?
Yep.
The water level in the reservoir is very low right now. Is that anything to be concerned about, or is it just?
We may be coming back and looking at further restrictions, but we're monitoring that.
But it's visually, it's low, but as you said, the majority of the water is underground anyways.
Yes, well, the water in the reservoir, it hasn't hit any, it hasn't hit a trigger point where we'd say it's time to increase restrictions. We're thinking now with cooler weather, things are leveling off.
Okay. Great.
Next is gender item number 14. This will be a discussion and a vote. Correspondence Board and Town Administrator, it'll be regarding the Hemmerock Response Letter and Response Letter to the Patriot Ledger. At the end of me reading this statement, a statement which you all have received, and I'll also read it, I'll be asking for a motion and a vote of the full board to endorse this statement. So I think you could read along with me if you'd like. As many, as many are aware, the Board of Selectmen has a pending action at the Attorney General's office for an alleged violation of the open meeting law relative to the approval of contracts in executive session that should have been voted in open session once negotiations were completed. The Attorney General's Office took over jurisdiction of open meeting law complaints in 2010 and since then has been issuing new guidelines and rulings that in some cases differ from previous practices. Although the board's action was based on guidance from Town Council, the board nevertheless takes such allegations seriously and immediately corrected that oversight by revoting in open session. Our additional reviews and responding to the Attorney General indicate that the board's action, while not intentional, also revealed that the board needed to tighten up in other areas, such as providing more subject matter specifically in posting executive sessions instead of the prior brief description. We have employed this greater detail since learning of it last April. Most recently, the board sent out two letters on important town matters that we have discovered did not comport with, comply with the requirements of the open meeting law. Specifically, on August 17th, the board mailed to all residents and homeowners of the Hemmerock, in Hemmerock, a letter responding to allegations raised about the board's bonfire ban outlined in an August 2nd letter. The town administrator was directed by the board chair to draft the letter. She consulted with the fire and police chiefs and then emailed to the board members and Town Council for corrections, approval, et cetera. In reviewing the open meeting law guidelines, the board has learned that such a letter could not be sent under the board's name unless the board, convening at a duly posted meeting, discussed the letter and directed the town administrator to send it. On August 24th, the board emailed to the editor of the Patriot Ledger a letter responding to an editorial that appeared on August 23rd implying that the board acted improperly in a hearing regarding the potential removal of a Situate Housing Authority member. The town administrator recommended an email that the board responded to the reporting errors via a letter to the editor. She was asked to draft the letter as soon as possible for timeliness reasons and again emailed it to the board members for approval, as with the above scenario, the board could not do this absent a public meeting. The board, as the town's chief executive officer, and the town administrator as a chief administrative officer, are faced with many requirements, mandates, statutes and regulations. Not only we, but town staff work hard to ensure compliance. However, we are not perfect and on those, and on those hopefully rare occasions, when we discover practices that are not in compliance with the full intent of the law, we are committed to making it right. Such is the case here. In recent weeks, we have provided every board and committee with the 2012 open meeting law guidelines prepared by the Attorney General. We have created a webpage on the town's website with direct links to the open meeting law guidelines and FAQs. By providing this information, both we and our residents can have the rules readily available. In any event, we want residents to know we take these guidelines seriously, endeavor to do better, and regret the error. Finally, the board, in accordance with our greater understanding of the open meeting requirements, will now discuss and vote on the two letters. Such discussion occurring at a public meeting and to be fully considered again by the board. That's the statement. As I said, we will be asked, I will ask you to vote on these two items. Any discussion, anyone would like to come forward with now, please do.
First, we vote an endorsement of the statement. Do you want to do that?
Yeah, fine. I don't think it's any particular order.
Move that we endorse this statement?
Second.
Discussion?
Could I expand on that motion to what's suggested here?
Sure.
Just so it's very specific. Move the Board of Selectmen vote to endorse the statement of the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen relative to a letter to the editor of the Patriot Ledger and a letter to Hemmerock residents.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, we need a discussion, anyone would like to, on those two letters, feel free to do it.
Sure, I mean, the first letter was one that we sent to all the residents of Hemmerock. As most of you know, we got a letter from the residents of Hemmerock, or a number of them, I don't know, several dozens anyways, that had some misstatements in there, and I know the town administrator did her due diligence and sort of the chair and even myself in speaking with the police chief and the fire chief and the people that were on site and also some of the residents, and we sent a letter out that corrected some of the facts that were inaccurate and gave all the residents of Hemmerock a better understanding of what, you know, the town feels occurred on that evening.
Thank you. Murray?
Yeah, the only thing I'd like to add to that is I'd like to thank all the people that have contacted us in strong support of both the process and the content of us sending out those letters. I mean, people said, this is great, it cleared up a lot of inaccuracies. I mean, I know, I heard people over, I've overheard people standing in line at various places saying, oh, look what happened, look what happened, and then now there's an official record as to actually what did and didn't happen, and so I think the letters were fantastic, and I'd like to thank everybody for, those people that called up and said, really appreciated you guys taking the time to write us the letters and explain the situation and keep up the good work, because I received not a single negative comment at all about the content of those letters, and in fact, I received personally, myself, probably 20, 25 positive comments about them.
I have further discussion, anything on the Hemmerock letter or the letter to the Patriot Ledger? Any comments?
Do them separately, want to make a motion to do the first one? Or any more?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment on the Hemmerock letter. I'm going to say, I fully support the town behind it. You know, we went through after, there was a lot of what I believe to be misinformation that was put out. Consequently, you know, the town went, took a look into this, you know, people's perceptions are the reality. We took it upon ourselves, given our position as selectmen, to try to ascertain what went on that night, and I think the town, the administrator, the chiefs did a thorough job vetting it out to explain the side of the town. And, you know, consequently, I think it was a well-written letter that pretty much explains the details of that night. There may be people who object to it, people who disagree with it, but, you know, reasonable minds can disagree, but I think it's very thorough and for everybody in the audience, both here and also, both in the news and also in television, read the letter. Read it. I think it's self-explanatory. So I endorse that full-heartedly.
Probably a motion on the first one would be good.
Sure. Move the Board of Selectmen vote to support the letter sent to the editor. Should we do both or do them separately?
Separately.
Okay, so move the Board of Selectmen vote to endorse the statement of the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen relative to?
We just did that one. You want number two.
Well, they're combined in both of them. So.
I'll tell you what, what if we do this?
Move the Board of Selectmen vote?
Hold on, because I'm actually going to abstain from the second letter. I wasn't part of the party to it, so.
So I'll move the Board of Selectmen vote to support the letter sent to the Hemmerock residents, August 2012.
I'll second that.
Motion been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
And that's unanimous.
With respect to the second letter, I just wanted to have a discussion on that to the extent of, I wasn't present during the executive session, so I wasn't privy to what actually transpired. I did read the editorial, and I would certainly endorse what was written, but I would ask that the board stricken my name from the letter, only to the extent that I was not a participant, I wasn't participating on it. And I will abstain from this next vote on this.
Further comments from the board?
Just a bit of an explanation. The Ledger put an editorial in the paper regarding the proceedings that occurred with the Housing Authority and insinuated in the letter that some open meeting laws were violated when in fact they weren't, and the town administrator and the chair wrote a response to that, a correct response to it stating that due to the situation and that all the acts were followed properly and that there was no violation of the open meeting law, and that letter was sent to and printed in the ledger subsequently. And there's been no comment or response since that time, so I support the letter. I think we are right, and I think it needed to be said.
Further comments from the board?
I too completely support the letter, and the fact that we sent it to the newspapers hoping that they would publish it, which they in fact did, which we thanked them for, shows how much our intent was to have this all out in the open. Can't get much more open than asking a newspaper to publish a letter. So the whole spirit here and the whole goal is to keep everything completely open, and so I support the letter and I support this process we're doing here to make sure we do cross the Ts and dot the Is and learn about all these new rules and processes.
I think this is a big step in our, in our effort to be transparent. I think we've always tried to be, as the statement reads. Sometimes things slip through the cracks, and when they do, and we do find those things, we're going to correct them. I'll take a motion on the letter to the Ledger.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to support the letter sent to the editor of the Patriot Ledger in August of 2012.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
One abstention. The vote is four, zero, one abstention. All right, next item is, motion vote acceptance of land policy consideration of two properties on Chittenden and Hadley Road. Town Administrator.
Gentlemen, you have a new packet of memo from me relative to the two proposals in front of you tonight. They're not mutually exclusive, but one isn't tied to the other. As I note in the memo to the board, we continue to get requests to accept donations of town land, that the town has really no existing policy or criteria under which to evaluate or vet the efficacy of the town acquiring those parcels of land. Given that that donation means it comes off the tax rolls, I think it behooves the town and the board to adopt a policy that creates some criteria by which the Conservation Commission and other boards and committees can evaluate the efficacy of the request. So that's pretty much what my memo outlines to you. It gives you a history of the land that the town has acquired since FY06 and taken essentially off the tax rolls, and suggests some terms and conditions under which the board would have me adopt a policy that we would consider on the go-forward for accepting any donations. Absent that policy, if that the board's sole discretion. Conversely, the criteria under which the town would decide to sell parcels of land, we get a number of inquiries and maintain a list from people about parcels of land the town owns that they would like to acquire. We'd also develop a policy along those lines and come back to the board for adoption and approval of both those policies. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Rick Murray?
So there's two separate issues here, three separate issues. Issue one is one of these parcels of land. Issue two is the second parcel of land. Issue three is the policies about what you're speaking. Tonight, we're not going to be resolving any policy issues.
That's correct.
Right? Okay. Is it your, or do you have any comment on, is it premature for us to consider these two parcels of land since the policy is not yet in place?
I wouldn't suggest that. The two individuals who have the parcels before you have actually been waiting a considerable amount of time. I know one of them actually abuts conservation land. Both of them have been endorsed and supported by the Conservation Department, so it's really the board's discretion. But regardless of what the board's action is tonight, I would ask that before you entertain any further requests that you have a policy in place.
I'm with you on that. Great. Thank you.
John?
Are we obligated to take it on behalf for conservation purposes? Can't we as a board take it for purposes of the town? In other words, I know that a lot of lands are, a lot of people are trying to donate back parcels to the town through conservation, but they can also donate it back to the Board of Selectmen instead of the conservation.
Yes, that is correct.
Are we stuck to stay with conservation? Because I only say it in that, you know, maybe the board can either resell it in the future, or if not, the board has the opportunity to do different things, but with conservation restrictions, it certainly will limit the board's or the town's ability to do things with those parcels. If it, if it's determined that we want to put a bike path maybe on a portion of, I think it's, it's on the Laverdy property, or in conjunction with trails going in through the McDermott property, I'm just, I just find, I'd like to see it go to the Board of Selectmen so that the board would have that option potentially going forward, as opposed to putting a conservation restriction on it.
No, I think the board can contemplate both those eventualities. I mean, most of the requests you're getting are for unbuildable lots or whatever. So, yeah, it can contemplate either outright from conservation or from the board as a whole.
I realize with the McDermott, there's a Verno Pool, which we're not going to build a house on it, but if there's an opportunity for the town to do something, staging for trails or something to go through, not to say that conservation's going to say no to it, but if there's a restriction on the property, and this is more or less for people, there's more difficulty to get approval for it, and that's why I'd rather see it go to the Board of Selectmen with the board being able to make maybe a determination on what to do with the property, as opposed to saying, there's a restriction right out of the gate. I mean, example would be the property that we're considering up on 3A with the strategic plan and different things, you know, there are some properties up there that we'd have to get out of conservation if we're going to do something, if we're going to consider a parcel. I just think it would be better for this, for the board to consider taking it through the Board of Selectmen as opposed to putting a restriction on it through COMCOM.
Anyone else?
I just want to understand the property. I don't know.
I'm Neil.
Hi, how are you? Which property are you on? So I'm looking at a map here. So I'm looking at a map here. It's six, it's the one where the, it's 60?
The house is 60. I own both the house, which I just sold, and the lot is right across from the house. The lot is lot 25.
Lot 25, okay.
And they're both right next to the conservation land, that almost 20 acres, that was given to the town by the Smith family, when Mr. Smith died quite a few years ago. So I, I didn't decide, you know, whether to go to conservation. I just told the treasurer, after my husband died last year, that I really, the new owners of the house didn't want to buy it. They're a young couple, and they didn't want to have to pay more taxes. It's not, you know, it's across the street. If it was right next to the house, it would have been sold with the house, but it's not. So I came to Jane Laporta, and she brought me to conservation.
Okay.
And I didn't know about any other way to do it.
No, I'm not blaming, I'm not blaming you. My thought was, because I know, I looked at the parcel, and I realized that it abuts both Cushing Elementary School and also the high school property, and I know that we, that's all town land, but if it's a conservation restriction, which I wasn't aware of, again, it limits the potential of what we want to do, if we want to open ball fields or things of this nature.
Oh, I see.
Because I know that there's obviously need for that.
But parcel.
I saw that. So that's what I'm saying, if we put a restriction on it, now granted, maybe all the other surrounding parcel, or the Smith parcel was restricted. If we want to do something as a town, we're restricted to try to figure out a way to kind of lift that restriction through COMCOM, but if we didn't have that restriction in the first place, we might have that opportunity. And the reality is, is if there's a, if there's water, if there's a veronal pool, you're not going to be able to do it anyways. And I totally get that.
Mr. Richardson said that because of the veronal pool down there with the little critters...
Right.
It had to be 50 yards, and then at some point it changed, it had to be 100 yards, and therefore, he declared it unbuildable. But...
Unbuildable is one thing, but as John pointed out, where it's right next to the Cushing school, I think the whole issue of the town taking some of this property, this is a perfect example of property that the town might want to have used, and I have no idea why we'd, you know, but when you have, when you have a lot of land that abuts a school, piece of school property, it could be used for expanding a field or...
As a matter of fact, I think it's still there. They put in a pathway right next to the football field, right in back of my land, to let the children walk up to Cushing school, because they were too close to take the bus.
Okay.
I don't know if they still use that, but...
But it's a good example where, you know, instead of having to take bus, it might be even better for safe routes to schools and pathways and so on. That's my whole point.
Which begs the question, I guess, if we want to do whatever we can tonight to help you, of course, my question would be to Tricia, I guess, if the board desired, could they take this in the name of the town tonight? If, if...
Could we accept it?
If, could we accept it in the name of the town, if the owner doesn't...
Yes, as long as the conveyance and the donation is in agreement with the terms of the donator. So if you just want to donate it to the town, instead of the Conservation Commission...
It doesn't matter to me.
Then that's fine.
I didn't know.
You can accept it under that. Yep.
Sure.
That would be the only restriction for somebody else donating.
Yeah, I was going to make the exact point. It's really up to the conveyor, and I agree with John's point, but, you know, there are many people that will give, give land to the town, but, you know, they will say, hey, only to conservation.
Fine.
And that's up to them. So I was just going to ask you, what's your case? So if you don't mind, whatever.
My land is right there, as he pointed out, the schools...
Let's go for it.
And the football field, so it's, you know, it doesn't matter to me.
You want a motion?
Please, if there's no further discussion, seeing none.
Move the board of selectmen vote to accept a donation of land, parcel number 32-1-14-F-R McDermott, on behalf of the town of Situate. Period.
Second.
Uh, thank you, discussion, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. It's very generous.
Thank you for thinking of us. It's very generous of you.
Very generous, and thank you. Uh, there's one more parcel?
Correct. Move the board of selectmen vote to accept a donation of land, parcel number 21-3-2-0-R Laverdy, on behalf of the town of Situate.
We can discuss it, or just...
Yep, discussion?
Well, he's got a motion, he needs a second for discussion, just to be, since everybody's watching.
He needs a second.
Second for discussion.
All right, now thank you, Sean. Now discuss it. Rick, or anybody?
Yeah, just to understand where, where it is, if we can just look at the map and...
I think if you go, if you're traveling north on Hathley Road, as soon as you bend, the bend from Eli, there's all that, it's almost like, you can see, it's like a causeway, you can see the earthen work of Musquashka Pond. Oops, Musquashka Pond. Those are the lots, it's like 53,000 square feet. And then, what would have been known as the Snackery, Sean? Is that where the Snackery was, on the other side? So, for all intents and purposes, this is all water. There's nothing you can really do.
So on this map, what ones on the map is it?
I think it's, it's the...
A and B?
And I think it's, hang on. Where's it? Where's the map? I understand, I think it's...
It's 21...
A, B, C, D, E, F, isn't it?
Yes.
All, all those lots. You can see them.
It's all marsh.
Yeah.
Just beyond the old house, though.
Right.
The Snackery.
So where's Eli at?
On, it would be back.
So, my feelings on this one is, I actually don't support the deletion of the Conservation Commission from this, because we have a letter from their attorney that says, back in 2012, I had written about the possibility of donating the above-caption parcel to the town for, it says "conversation purposes," but I assume that's a typo, and they mean conservation purposes. So, that's a typo on their letter, not us. So here, I mean, unless we hear otherwise from the audience, from the donor, it seems like they do want conservation. So, but I'm fine with holding off on this, seeking clarification, because if they don't care, I'm fine either way. But if they do want it, and this is five acres right next to Musquashka, so it's probably not going to happen anyways, but it makes more sense to me for conservation, because that is a regulated state great pond. And so there might be conservation reasons, there might be reasons why we would want it to be conservation, but regardless of that, I'm not worried about it getting built, because it's all wetland anyways. But I think we should seek clarification from the potential donor. Are they doing it only for conservation or not?
Two thoughts on that. I would agree, if they want to do that, ask Attorney Brooks if that's what the Laverdys want to do, number one. Number two, you're not going to be able to build on it.
I agree.
So whether you give it to the town, or you give it to conservation, I think it's a moot point. The only exception is, is that, you know, there was a concept with different people who were talking about bike paths connecting Gannet all the way down to Jericho at some point. And there may be a portion of this that could be used for a bike path, but if you put a conservation restriction on it, then that's going to be a major issue. So I'm just saying, if there's a potential for linkage in the future, not this year, not next year, but 10 or 15 years down the road, then we're going to be hamstringing ourselves with the possibility of not being able to build on that side of the road, which means you have to go on the other side of the road, which could alter the whole location of the bike path. My whole point is, if they're willing to donate it to the town, I don't think it's going to make a difference, whether it's COMCOM or the town, because we're never going to be able to build a house on it.
I agree.
I just, I only say for future purposes of other uses that could be used, and I'd rather see it go to the town for...
So I would, I would check with the owner, and even if they do say, if, let's say they come back and say, no, we want it for conservation, I think we should engage them and say, you know, would you be happy with a, with a conservation restriction, not just the whole thing going into conservation, and, you know, you potentially mention something like a path. Because oftentimes, owners don't really understand the process, and they might think, hey, I just want to make sure a house doesn't get built. They might not know it's not regulated, or whatever.
Or an easement.
So they might, or an easement.
An easement.
An easement, or something like that. But I would just check with the owners.
Um, Tony?
Just to play devil's advocate, why do we want this property? They can't build on it. It's all wet. We get taxes on it now. Why are we...
But do we want it at all?
Maybe we want to put a path on there sometime.
Well, if you put a path there, it's going to be along the whole stretch of the land, and we're going to have whatever, whatever area the town has access to, just like we did on Gannet.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know, I'm trying to figure out what the tax, it doesn't seem like it's a ton of tax dollars, but I can't tell if this is just one of the lots. It looks like $70 a quarter for, I just can't figure it out. I don't think I have all the sheets here, but I...
Yeah, that's a good question. All my comments were predicate on assuming, and I didn't crack, I didn't question that assumption, so that's a good question to ask.
I think that gets us into the policy, of saying, you know, why take property if we're taking it off the tax rolls, even though it's a small amount of money, unless, unless we have a policy as to, is it going to further enhance the water quality, or if it's going to be better for open space, or for long-term vision as to what we're going to use it for? And I think you're right, Tony. That's a good question.
I think, the two things that we need when we discuss these things is, what is the tax dollars that we're, we're talking about? And I don't think we have a good grip on this property, as to what we're going to be taking off the dole.
On this property? Not much at all, hundreds of dollars per year, not much.
Yeah, I mean, that's just a number we should note. We should say, it's $418, or whatever it happens to be. I didn't see it. And then...
$78.
How much is it?
$78.
$78 a year? For each parcel?
Yep. It's in the property card.
One, two, three, four, five, six. That's a quarter, though. If I look at this one, it's $82 a quarter. Is that what that is? For this one property?
Yeah, that shows the interest, because it was in a REAs, so I think it's 78, Tony.
Well, we should understand, understand what that is. I think this one actually may have some, some good bearing, though, because it's right up against Musquashka Pond, and it may be something that we need to restore that pond back to its, its health at some point. I'm just saying, if it's non-bindle bill, it's not attached to anything we're really looking at.
So we need, we should get, if I may summarize so far, I would like clarification from the owner, whether they want, they do mean conservation or not, would they be happy with an easement, as John says, or some wording like that? I would also like, and this is to sort of presage the policy, but I would be very interested in this piece of land, is any of it upland enough to be built? Built? I'm pretty darn sure the answer to that's going to be no.
Wouldn't become a...
But I would just like that to be documented, just so we can make an informed decision, and then sort of a financial bottom line, even though it's a small number, but just actually to get it, the total, for those.
We should be able to list at least two points why we want the property.
Yeah, that's fine.
Why don't we do this?
Figure it out next time.
Just a suggestion, what do we, do you want to postpone action on this, and ask the town administrator to put together a policy, as she can, and then, depending upon that policy, we'll also have asked the owners if they want conservation or not, and if they insist on conservation, then we'll just go ahead and do it. If they don't, we'll let the policy decide on what we're going to do.
Right. And we got to remember John's point that he brought up, is a very good one. If you get it not in conservation, it's always a chip for you to use...
Yep.
When you may want to transfer other land out of conservation, and you can put this property in conservation. So, you know, that may alone be enough of a reason to do it, if you can get it into that condition.
Right. So is that a plan?
Just getting, just getting, like Rick said, just getting the answer from the, the owners. It seems to me like it's a burden to them. They probably lose the bill, and it gets in the reals, and next thing you know, it's in here, that we couldn't take it, because it was $15 owed or something. So now it's current, just find out how they want to give it to us and take it, then make this policy. And I agree with the policy. And there's got to be value, because of the butts, like Tony said, and Rick, this is your department, because of the butts, you know, whether it's salt, or brackish, or do we open the gates or not? Maybe we can build new gates there. So it's going to be a value. Let's just...
Okay. That, everyone on the same page? Good. So that takes care of 15. Do we want a motion on the second piece to postpone action on that?
Move to postpone action to the next meeting?
Second.
To a future meeting?
You don't want to wait too long, because these...
They had an original motion on this.
I'll move to withdraw my motion, and, so I need a second on that, don't I?
Second.
And then Tony's motion?
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye. I move that we postpone this to a future meeting.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, 16, discussion vote, steering committee for the building master plan, an important item. Tricia?
You have your packet of memo from me, with a proposed charge to create a public facilities master plan steering committee, after we met with all the stakeholders in June 18th, and received that feedback, with the, and in addition to the appropriations we approved at the April town meeting, we're sort of in a position now where we need to move forward in a more strategic and concrete manner, to start to make some progress on the public facilities master plan. So to that end, I'm proposing, recommending to the board that we create a public facilities master plan steering committee. I've given the board a proposed charge for that committee, and the makeup of that committee, and I'll just briefly read two paragraphs regarding the charge. The public facilities master plan steering committee is created in an effort to ensure all stakeholders in this major development redevelopment process have a venue in which to provide input before, input before any decisions are finalized by town officials. The committee is solely advisory in its capacity, and in no way shall supersede or take the place of the board of selectmen and school committee, to determine ultimate courses of action. It is expressly understood that the Situate Public Building Commission and any building committees required by the Commonwealth's Massachusetts School Building Authority will have primary jurisdiction over any approved building and construction project. The steering committee shall provide input and suggestions for recommended uses for a variety of current and foreseeable community civic and municipal activities and operations. The purpose of the committee is not to revisit decisions once made by officials about public facilities, but to work with the various entities to bring any approved plan to fruition, and be reflected of the needs of all affected constituent groups. The committee shall serve as an information resource for residents and constituent groups about the progress of public facility plans.
Thank you. You've, in your memo to us, you have suggested not to exceed 15 members, just, you know, two members of the school committee, two members of the council on aging, one member of the library board of trustees, one member appointed by the recreation commission, one member appointed at large from the general public. And then also, you suggest, it says, the board shall include a member of the economic development commission and planning board...
Of the eight we appoint.
The board has eight.
A member of the town business community will also be appointed. So that's about 10, I guess. I'd like to just suggest that we increase the number of citizens to more than one. I'd just like to make that...
This is a proposal for the board's, so it can change.
That is what the eight are. We can appoint any of the eight. Of the eight, only three are economic development, business community, and planning board. So there'd be five other appointments from the board.
Which could go anywhere, which would go to the public, I'm sure. I mean, most likely. I mean, there were people in the public who are working hard on this issue who may be not falling into any of these categories. I'm sure they're included.
All right. Two questions. I see the school committee has two members, which makes sense considering that a little more than a third, probably more like, not half, less than half, would be like a middle school or something. Why is, I'm just curious, why do we have two members from the council on aging? I mean, it seems a little disproportionate, that's all. They need a vote, I totally agree with it, but I just don't understand, you know, why we're looking to put two as opposed to two from recreation, or why the police and the fire aren't on it because we're going to be talking about a fire station, a police station. That's all. And I realize it's a hot-button issue, but my attitude is, I think it's disproportionate. I mean, I don't really care, frankly, but I'm just asking.
I have no ownership in how I did it, so it's up to the board.
I mean, it's up to fifteen. We can put...
As many as you want.
As many in who we want, for that matter.
You can add or reduce the size, too.
I mean, I just think that, you know, certainly the school definitely should have a minimum of two because they're going to have a huge input on it. And I just think it's disproportionate. Don't take it the wrong way. Council on Aging, a senior center's a very important aspect of it, but I just don't want to start out of the gate with a disproportionate number. That's my position. I think there should only be one.
We can decide that.
It's up to everybody else on the board.
Rick Murray?
I agree with that suggestion. So I am just doing my accounting here, and I know we just did it, but I'm a little slow tonight, folks. Eight from, eight appoint, eight members appointed by BOS, plus, just as the suggestion, two from school, two from aging, which we've, I agree with Mr. Dennehy, but just for the sake, one from library, one from rec, one from general public. So that's eight and two is ten, and two is twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. And I understand it's just the model. But how would that general public person be appointed? From us? By us?
Yeah.
So we would make that appointment. And of our initial, in this accounting, of those eight, one is EDC, one is planning board.
That is...
And one is business.
Oh, thank you, Tony. All right.
Again...
Yeah, so it's just a model. And I just want to make sure I was, before I start to play with the model, I want to make sure I understood the model.
So, you know, I think Mr. Dennehy raises a very salient point in the spirit, and again, don't, I don't want to start getting piles of phone calls and emails from a particular constituency on this. But I think in the spirit of keeping things level amongst potentially interested constituencies, you know, I think one from aging, one from library, one from rec, and then, you know, increase the BOS number to nine. And I also point out that just because there's someone on there from the rec doesn't mean that other people also aren't interested in rec, or just because there might be only one person there from the council on aging, doesn't mean that many of the other people wouldn't be interested in aging issues as well. So, you know, we're not playing games like that, but we're just trying to get, you know, interested boards in equal representation.
One area that I...
With the exception of schools.
Go ahead. One area I was thinking of is maybe commission on disabilities. You're going to be dealing with facilities, you need to make sure you have access. And I'm like, you know, to me, that would make...
Public buildings, Phil. Sorry to interrupt.
Public buildings.
Well, they're a liaison.
So anyway, that's my whole point of saying, you know, just instead of giving...
That's a great one.
Again, it's, to reiterate...
You just did the framework.
I don't see this as a board of committees where planning board members are appointing their own members to this. It's trying to involve the community
Yeah, right.
in getting the word out and being informed of the progress all the time. So, you know, so I'd hate to see, you know, the planning board have a planning board member and rec have a rec member and council on aging. It's people that they are appointing to be able to be the conduit for information.
And I want to make sure, and I think it's outlined pretty well in your suggestion, that, you know, sometimes we get, we have a tendency, I guess, to appoint just boards, just board members to committees. And it's just almost a natural thing to do. But I want to make sure that we get, this is a big project that's going to affect the public, all the public, in a lot of ways, educationally, financially. And I want to make sure the public's well-included in this.
That's the intent, yeah.
Just a couple, I agree with John 100% that someone from public safety should be on there. I mean, they have one of the, one of the buildings that we're discussing. And I don't expect any of us to be on it. You know, I think...
I agree.
Like Joe said, we're going to be involved in the process. The school committee's going to be involved in the process wholeheartedly. This is other people that they know that are active that will be involved. If I did the math right, it looks like of the fifteen people, there's one from EDC, one from planning, one from business, two from school, one from council on aging or seniors, one library, one rec, and one from public safety. And I like the one from disabilities, too.
Mm-hmm.
That would be one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. And then there would be five other people
At large.
At large that we would appoint. You guys feel comfortable with that setup? And then you have two liaisons, one from public buildings and one from the facilities manager.
I think that makes sense.
That makes sense.
And I guess we would just go out to the general public and have people apply, and then they would...
We'd send a letter to the chairs, to those committees who have an appointment, and then the general public, we'd advertise, and then bring them back to the board.
And hopefully the newspapers would pick up on our request and put maybe a blurb in the marina that we're looking for people for this committee. Thank you.
What I'll do is, pending the board's vote, is I'll amend with the changes that you've made, and then I can send it out to the media outlets tomorrow.
So I move the board's selectmen vote to endorse the revised proposed charge for the public facilities master plan steering committee. So I added the word revised to reflect this conversation.
Okay. Motion been made. Looking for a second?
Second.
I heard a second from Sean. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Any discussion? I'm sorry, any further discussion? Go ahead, Frank.
I didn't mean to take... Someone from the Friends of Citrus Futures included in that steering committee. We're a group of organized citizens that are looking to advocate for the replacement or improvement of the gate schools. I think we represent a lot of the representation of the towns. It'd be helpful if we could be in that room or come here and have this discussion.
I think that was probably my intention when I wanted to make sure the public was involved. I had you people in mind, so. But the wood fields, they want to include that as well.
I think, I don't think it is a charge, but certainly the school committee could put you, or one of the five appointments that we have would could be one or two or however many of your members, you know, are active and want to be involved in it.
Yeah, I think it would be sufficient.
Yeah. My personal feeling, yes. I'm uncomfortable mentioning your organization by name because I don't want to start getting, then we're going to get other, potentially other civic organizations. We might have friends of this, friends of that, but certainly in terms of the spirit. And also in terms of being in the room, these are all open public meetings. And, you know, anybody will be able to speak and have their comments recorded and so on and so forth. But in terms of spirit, absolutely. But I'm not comfortable mentioning the organization by name.
Further? Thank you.
Did we vote on that?
Did we vote? No, we didn't. Okay. Do we have a motion?
Yep.
Your motion. And we had a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That's unanimous. Yes, we did vote on it. Then I went into, we voted on it, then I...
Yeah, I think we did.
After discussion, afterwards.
Then we went to discussion.
It's okay to vote things...
It's 9:30. Hey.
9:30. We did vote on it. Either way, we definitely voted, we double voted.
We just voted on it anyways.
We double voted. Seventeen, discussion votes, set special town meeting datum, preliminary view of articles. Tricia?
It's that time of year we have to set the date for the special town meeting. This year was particularly difficult in finding dates. Typically, we like to have it in October. There's a number of reasons that we have to sort of fit the town meeting into a narrow timetable because we need to set the tax rate in November. And that is predicated on the assessors coming to you for the tax classification hearing, and then calculating the bills and getting them all out by December. That dictates our cash flow for the entire year. So we want to make sure we get those tax bills out on time. They can't begin that process until all expenditures and budgets are finalized for the fiscal year, which can't happen until after you have a special town meeting because you're moving around appropriations. So the proposed date is not even in the one I gave you in the packet Friday because it's changed yet again. The date is Tuesday, November 13th. I'll explain the rationale behind that. The last two weeks in October, the town moderator is not available. He serves as town council to another community, and they have already scheduled their town meeting for the week of the 22nd. And that usually goes two, sometimes three nights. The week after that, the week of the 29th, is the week before the every-four-year presidential election. And the town clerk office is very busy, particularly doing absentee ballots, registration, and preparation. The week of the fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth, obviously the presidential election is the sixth, so the town clerk has to certify all that and report to the secretary of state. So the week after that is Veterans Day on Sunday, the 11th, which means the offices are closed on Monday. The 14th and the 15th don't work. That was my original memo to you. But in rechecking with the town clerk again today, we have to have a voter registration for the special town meeting on the 10th day before the actual date of the meeting. If it's the 15th, that's November 5th, which is the night before the presidential election. If it's the 14th, that's on a Saturday. So the best date is 13th, 10 days back, is Friday the 5th, I mean, Friday the 2nd, which would mean a warrant has to be posted on October 29th, giving you only really two meetings coming up to finalize a warrant. So that was the rationale behind it. I realize it's not the best date. It's later than I would like it. But that's what's being proposed for you to set the date for Tuesday, November 13th.
Discussion first, and then a motion, or motion then discussion? Either way.
Pretty clear, I guess.
Makes sense.
Move the board's selectmen vote to set a date for the special town meeting as Tuesday, November 13th.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous.
The second part of this is you have a tentative listing of warrant articles I'm already carrying, subject to official notice going out to solicit any potential articles, given what the board just voted. I met with Mark Sandum last week to talk with about him. Tendively, he's here tonight. Some of those, though, especially the ones that are TBDs, to be determined, I just need to get a general sense of the board tonight. If you really want me, if you're thinking of considering it for this fall town meeting warrant, it would be helpful to me so I can get, do the due diligence and get more information so you have it for your next meeting.
Library project, what is that?
That would be the tentative funding for it.
That would be...
I wouldn't.
Again, this is, when we send the notice out, I'm just saying that that's a possible one we might get back from the board. That's all. So it's not 100%.
Okay.
The meals tax, again, that's another one that, we're talking big picture, but I don't know if, it may be a little early.
Again, I tend to think it's more right for an annual town meeting than a special. It's a big discussion.
I think so, too.
Yeah, my sense on some of the stuff is that they're better off for an annual. I like reserving the specials for financial things that absolutely have to be done for whatever accounting calendars are necessary. And anything and everything else put out, put out to the annual, just for attendance reasons and planning reasons. There are some other things in here that, to me, seem to require the annual, like some of those other things with big numbers on them. For example, various feasibility studies and so on, they're listed.
Some of it, a little bit time-sensitive in that, you know, we want to get...
Oh, if it's time-sensitive, absolutely. Keep things moving. I don't want to, you know, I don't want to slow anything down either. But, you know, if it's a...
It was last year.
You know?
Yep.
But meals tax, you know, how is the library project going to fit into the grand plan? I mean, that needs to be, you know, we were just talking about this committee we put up. We're just started, which isn't even...
I agree.
Which isn't even impaneled yet, right? So we have this 15-member board that we just started that we don't even have anybody in place for. And are we expecting by the special to be able to comment on a potential library or any other potential interfering with our grand plan? So that's the sort of stuff I personally prefer putting up in the annual. And not just this year, but in general for future years as well.
Yeah, and this is just the list I carry all year. So we'll schedule this, the notice will go out, and we'll have it on the next two agendas to flesh them out even more so the board will have to vote in its first meeting on October, probably.
Okay.
I don't know if Mark had anything.
Okay. I don't think there's a, there's no motion necessary there. I don't believe there's a...
You already set the date, so that's done.
All right. No motion necessary. Move to number 18, as the appointments.
Move the board's selectmen vote to appoint Peter Struziero to the cable television committee.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move the board's selectmen vote to appoint Mark Kern to the water resource committee.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Treasure collector.
Move the board's selectmen vote to appoint Pamela J. Avatabaly to the position of treasure collector pending successful salary negotiations.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Tony?
Yeah, I just wanted to discuss it for a second. I think, you know, they both were very competent and very, you know, starting to get their experience through the process. I think I was a little disappointed that they weren't more experienced. And they can't, obviously, they can't help it. I like the fact that they were both going down that path of getting educated and taking the classes and going down that step. I just think that we're putting ourselves in a situation where we have, as we all know, you know, someone less experienced than we've had in the past. And that's a bit of a concern to me. I think, I think I like your choice. I think of the two, they were very close, but I think she stood out a little bit more for me in some of the stuff she'd done historically. I do like, I guess the fact is that there is a probationary period of, is it six months?
Six months.
So there's a six-month probationary period. So if we find that the level of experience just isn't enough for what the town needs, and I don't mean to go, I know they're both watching right now, or, you know, I don't, I'm not trying to go down a negative path. I'm just trying to be conservative here. I guess we do have a recourse if we find that the town really just needs someone more experienced. I know that you've gone through the process, you've looked at 100 resumes, and right now, the pool of applicants is what it is. And, you know, we've looked at quite a few of them. So, you know, I support your motion, but I, those are my concerns, and I think we should look at it closely over the first six months and make sure that they're on track to what the town needs.
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, I'm looking at both, trying to gauge who would be in better position, you know? It's difficult sometimes. And I thought Ms. Avatabaly, you know, personality was nice. We need to make sure, not that the other woman wasn't, just that they're both similar as far as her experience goes, as far as, as much experience for municipal government, similar. I just feel that, you know, the one thing, I kind of quizzed her a few things that I wanted to find out. I like the way she rebounded in saying, well, if you're not a double A, triple A, we will soon be, which is the attitude I'd like. I like the fact that, you know, the hours are the hours. We're not going to have any issues about, well, I want to work less or I want to work more. I mean, the difficulty this board has faced is that our past treasurer collector had years of experience. She moved on to a better, another position, another town. And, you know, it's been difficult. The last person we interviewed, you know, for what it's worth, didn't suit my likings, the fact that he had another business on the side. This person, at least both these applicants are going to be doing this job full-time. And, you know, if it's the wrong decision, you're absolutely right. You know, we'll have an opportunity during probation period to determine or ascertain whether or not she's capable of doing it. And if not, then we'll have to move on to another person. But I just think, between the two, my reason for selecting is I thought she handled some of the questioning. And time only tells whether we're right. I hope we are. So I just wanted to just explain my reason for nominating her as the treasurer collector. Thanks.
I think, I was impressed by both candidates, obviously, but I think I was more impressed in the fact that Pamela came recommended by both the town administrator and the town accountant, the people that the treasurer will actually be working with most, and that's so important. Maybe more important than anything else is that the ability of the accountant and the town administrator to have confidence in the treasurer. Also, both candidates met with the staff of the treasurer's office. I spoke to the staff of the treasurer's office. Again, they had nothing but good things to say about both candidates. However, they did say they seemed to prefer Pamela. So that weighed heavily on my vote, so I will vote yes for Pamela Avatabaly.
Rick first.
No, we didn't vote. We made a motion?
Yeah, and we're in discussion, right?
Yep.
So, yeah, I agree with the motion. I'll vote in favor of it. Both of them have lefts experience than our most recent predecessors. Like Pamela seemed to have a little more experience in a couple more towns, a little more municipal experience than the other candidate. And that's why I'm, and I'm not just saying this, very close candidates, they both bring different strengths, but Pamela, a little more municipal experience. She's been the assistant treasurer at Duxbury. Duxbury's a very well-run town. It's a coastal community. She knows about beach stickers, you know, that sort of thing. And that, the culture of a town, I think, is also very important. Although our town administrator came from the hills, she certainly learned quite well what a coastal community is like. But I do think that's one of the benefits that Pamela brings to this position.
Okay, we've had a motion, we've had a second. Am I correct?
Yep.
Yep.
All in favor of Pamela Avatabli? Please signify by saying yes. Aye?
Aye.
Yes, aye.
Yes, aye. The vote is five to nothing, and it's unanimous. The town administrator pending negotiations.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
We'll talk to the candidates tomorrow, and we congratulate both candidates, and we welcome Pamela Board, hopefully. Next. Next, next, next. Town administrator. Report of the town administrator, including a vote on a policy regarding communications.
The first item in my report of the two is just to bring to the board's attention the plethora of events that the town is hosting, June, July, August, September, and October, that is, we've had a number of brand-new first-time events this year. The policy is that if they're returning, with the exception of Heritage Days, the duathlon, and the KFC carnival, I can approve them, if brand-new ones come to the board. We have a brand-new request for a very large event in North Situate. I have asked Sergeant Gilmartin last month not to meet with anybody else to plan events until I brought to the board's attention the fact that our community, every single weekend, has one, sometimes two, events, and those, to some extent, create traffic disruptions. And so, I, before we go any further on planning this October event, I informed the organizer that the board really had to seriously look at the number of events we've already approved. So, those were my concerns, and I think I included the application for the new event.
Comments from the board?
Full speed ahead, absolutely necessary. We're getting ad hoc, ad hoc all over the place on these things, and we have to bring some structure to it, just like we have with the cart vendors and all this sort of stuff. So, I really, this is good.
I agree. There seems to be one every day, and a lot of them don't, aren't related to Situate at all. So, you know, they're using our streets and our infrastructure.
Yep.
Now, on the one that we have here, do we want to discuss this one?
Again, it's like the land donation, if someone trips the discussion, does that mean they get penalized? So, that's why I brought it to the board.
I mean, this looks like a fun family event for Situate people, in an area that really doesn't take a lot of events up in North Situate. Is this the chamber event? Who's pointing?
Yeah, I'm going to recuse myself on this discussion, as I am board member of the Chamber of Commerce, so I'll let you guys discuss this.
So, it's, you know, it's a little bit different than running a 10K race and closing streets and all this sort of stuff. It's a, a fall festival, is what they're suggesting, a family atmosphere with pony rides, pumpkin carvings, music, chowder fest, blah, 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 in the fall. So, I would, it sounds interesting to me, I'd bring my kids, so. I think it's a little different than blocking streets and doing all that sort of stuff.
It would be nice to know what's planned and what happens.
That's why we talk about it here. I don't think, unfortunately, that's what happens a lot, you know? Events go on, and they don't come down and say, "A race is coming down your street," you know? That should be part of the process, that we figure out what is the time period between discussion and approval. You know, a lot of times we do it all in one night and don't give the general public the chance to come in and speak in.
Is it a chamber event? Do we know?
Yes.
It is a chamber event.
Chamber event.
And I'm a member of the chamber, I know nothing.
I'm confused. I thought we were talking about Tricia's report, now we're talking about...
Well, this is part of it.
Yeah, I know, I know that, but shouldn't this be by itself, like every other one? And I agree with Tony, I think it's a great idea, and I see where Ian's coming from, but...
Well, part of the problem with it is this came in last week, and it's in two, you know, it's next month. I mean, that's the whole issue about the fact that either you have to stop taking new events, because we get it, and then all the departments, it goes to seven departments, we had to verbally walk this around so it could get into your packet in order to get an approval tonight.
Is that why we, is that why 10 withdrew? Was another one.
No, no, that was for a different reason altogether.
Yeah, no, like I said, I don't have a problem voting it if it's, if we can vote it tonight, and sometimes it's critical that we do it.
I don't think we can vote it tonight, because it's not on the agenda. So, but I think, why don't we, we can discuss it and get it out there, and let the general public know that there's a thought of this, and can go to the chamber meeting and learn more about it, and then maybe we can put it on the agenda for our next meeting?
Yep.
Right. I put it under my report to raise the issue of, I would really like the board, again, the board's only approving brand-new events. I approve general events, is to be able to say, "We're not approving after whatever the disposition of this is. We just can't entertain any new ones for these periods, given the schedule that we've already approved." For, and mostly, like you said, Tony, Situate organizations we want to give preference to.
Yeah, I'd like, this is kind of a big deal, closing down, I think it means closing down North Situate.
I think it's just going in front of the WPA building.
Just in the town.
Thousand people, though, I mean, I'm...
Well, that's what they predict.
Thousands.
A thousand?
One thousand. Over the course of a day?
May I ask a question, please?
Of course.
Thank you. Amber Bynum, Penn Crisro. The email that I got said that there would be some type of event sometime in October, and it was moved to it. I have no clue what it would be. I would presume, from what you're saying, it would be in front of the WPA building. Part of the email said there would be a chowder fest, and vendors, and what have you. But, no one has, I'm the treasurer of the North Situate Merchants Association, and I have a checkbook, but nobody's, nobody's come and said, "Gee, what is the date that you have?"
It's October 13th. Don't they usually run, isn't there usually some sort of fall thing in there?
There has been an Oktoberfest in years past.
By the chamber?
Well, we, the merchants have tried to do it. You know, the reality in North Situate is, I could count on, there are maybe 10 actual retailers of 70 businesses. Everything else is basically service. There are very, very few retailers up there. Very few.
Notwithstanding whether I agree with Ms. Burbine or not, I don't think we can vote this tonight, it's not an agenda item, and it sounds to me like it's a very nice affair, but sort of lack of planning on their part, I don't like being put under the gun. You know, it's like, this just came in last week, town hall staff worked their, worked very hard to walk it through and get approvals and so on. I don't like being pressured just because of the calendar. I mean, if this is such a large event, they should have been planning it a little ahead of time and giving it to us two weeks ago, and put out public note, a little more public notice. So, I'm all in favor of this event, you know, in theory, but bring it up in two weeks.
Okay. Why don't we, why don't we refer to a...
That's fine, we can put it on the agenda. I guess I need some just general feedback about sort of trying to...
Well, I think your policy is a good idea. One of the things I'd like to see as a policy is a hard deadline, such that, because there's been some other events that we've approved, and then they come back with modifications, and modifications, and modifications. Again, a completely worthy event that I, that this board entirely supported, you know, across the whole spectrum. But this new policy has got to have, like, a real deadline that seeks approval by two months ahead of time, three months ahead of time, whatever it might be. Maybe that's a scalable thing as a function of estimated size, but I wouldn't go down that route, because then everybody's going to say it's smaller than it's going to end up being, because they want a shorter turnaround time. But, you know, a real deadline, and then some content about the scale of potential revisions. Because some of these revisions that have been coming in have been, have been almost of the same scale of the whole event itself, moving the location, moving the date. So, it's like almost a whole new reapplication. So, when we're talking about the policy, I'd like a hard deadline. And this deadline, you know, this is, this is one month away. What's today, the 4th? Something like that? And the 13th is plus or minus a month. And that's just not, that's just, that's just not fast enough, in my personal view.
Well, we don't decide that. We put it on the next agenda, and if they can't, if that's not...
I agree. It's not, it's not our, it's not our issue. We want to...
I don't think I want a unilateral saying, "No more new events." I think what we have to do is coordinate it with the calendar, like, we can't say, there may be nothing in December, so if somebody wants to do something on December 3rd, I don't want to say right now, no one can do anything else, but when you look at the past months, there's no room for anything else in August, they're just, so that's got to be incorporated, and, you know?
Okay.
I think in general, we agree that we're booking up to our capacity of events.
These are all good things, we have to manage these good things. Manage the goodness.
Okay.
The second item, Mr. Chair, in order for there to be no more future confusion or ambiguity relative to...
Mr. Danny, can you be back for this, correct?
Oh, yeah.
Thanks, Ann.
Board of Communications, in light of its review of the open meeting law guidelines, I would recommend that the board approve the following policy, that the chairman of the Board of Selectmen and the town administrator are authorized to respond to and communicate with residents, businesses, and/or media on behalf of the board as necessary or warranted.
Yeah, makes sense, I...
So, what's this about?
Well, we can't, it's, it has to do with the open meeting law in terms of responding to simple requests about, people send an email and say, "I want a dumpster moved." And if we send an email out to all of us, and we all respond, then that's, can be considered a violation of the open meeting law. So, you know, we're authorizing the chair to make those decisions, and the town administrator to say, "Yes, you can move that dumpster," without all of us communicating on it. So, you can't, you can't have an electronic forum of discussion.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm well aware of that. I just wanted to make sure I knew where the context of this was, because this is so readily obvious.
This is for policy matters of the board. The issue that Joe spoke to previously, and I think is, I'm trying to remember, since I've been here, only two letters that have gone out from the full board, as opposed to the chair, whatever. So, this policy, in talking with town council, and a number of towns actually have it in place, was because of timeliness issues that we ran into with the ledger and stuff like that, that the chair would be authorized to respond, and for those kinds of matters, but would not be unilateral.
Absolutely, of course. This board, we get tons of letters all the time, and it's my pleasure to be able to support this motion.
But that doesn't mean that the board doesn't have input on it. It's just, you know, we all get the email, we all email Joe and say, you know, yes, no...
Move the dumpster. All right, move the board, move the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, the town administrator... I'm sorry. Move the Board of Selectmen vote that the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, the town administrator are authorized to respond to and communicate with residents, businesses, and/or the media on behalf of the board as necessary or warranted.
Second.
Just discussion. So, let me clarify this. So, if I get an email, I'm going to respond, it's not, the town administrator's going to be responding. But it's, if it's a general inquiry of the Board of Selectmen, then the chairman and/or, not and, not or, the chairman, or, I guess you could say individually, or the chairman in conjunction with the town administrator will be responding, correct? Okay. No, I have, I just want to clarify that, that's fine.
Okay. Motion to accept that policy?
You get that in a second.
We got a motion and a second on that? Okay. All in favor of that? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Again, that's another step in our, our willingness to have as much transparency as possibly can, to do everything according to the open meeting law, as we endeavor to always do. Okay. Next.
Do you want any other business?
Other business? Other business? I would, let me just start out, I have it here, so, I couldn't help noticing it was pointed out to me, the letter in the, in the Mariner, I guess it was, last week, from Kelly Rajay of Habview Road. And her, so very well-put, eloquent letter on the town's response and the town's decisions over July 3rd. I don't know if anyone read it, I hope everyone did.
I did.
And I would like to, I would personally, if the board wants it to go under, over the board's signature, that's fine, too, like to drop her a note just thanking her, because she absolutely got it. A lot of the Boston media and other places didn't get it, but she got it. So, I intend to either drop her a letter as an individual selectman, or if the board would like to join me with that, that's fine.
How old is she?
She's a, I don't know, she's in grade...
In 11th grade, I think.
11th grade Sacred Heart School, yep.
So, she's a bright...
15, 16, she got it. I mean, a lot of, as I say, repeat myself, but a lot of people didn't get it, she did.
Go ahead and sign my name with that, Joe, if you like.
That's fine.
Might as well.
And that's a good example, I think, of the policy.
I think we need to vote on it.
We have to vote on it.
I vote that we send a letter to this woman, thanking her for her response.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That's all I have. Rick, go ahead.
Well, we have a couple motions we need to do. Any...
And other business?
Sure. I just want to say that this past weekend, on Sunday, the Citrus Beach Association had their annual Labor Day parade, and I suggested to people two weeks ago to go see it, and I obviously was there, and just a great event, great day. It really epitomizes the town, the character of the people. It's just such a fun event, festive family event, and, you know, the police and the fire were participating in it, great all the way around. And it just, again, it's indicative of what this town has to promote, what it has to give, and I just, these events that go on, whether it's in the fall, or in the spring, or in the summer, you know, it, they're great events, and they're things that this town has to continue in order to keep its identity, whether it's down in Sand Hills, or downtown on Front Street, or North Situate. I strongly think that we, as a board, should support it, and this was one that the town has, and I commend the town for doing it. That's what I had to say. Thank you.
Tony, why don't you make those motions? I apologize for that.
Sure. The first one is to revote a DPW contract from July 10, 2012. Move the Board of Selectmen rescind the two votes taken at July 10, 2012 meeting regarding contract 12-HW-41, salt shed structure, and 12-HW-45 gasoline fuel dispensing system.
Second.
Aye.
Why? What's going on?
Because the board, when they approved these, signed the contract, and the contract had an effective date of July 10th. The contract is a housekeeping error, should have said June 30th, 2012, and because it's two different fiscal years, you have to rescind and revote. That's the only change. So, the effective date of July 10th should be June 30th, and that's why it's before you.
So, that's number two and three.
So, why don't I go right to number two? Move the Board of Selectmen vote, wait, did we vote on that?
We didn't vote on it. It's got a second.
The motion, we have a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, it's unanimous.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to award the contract for replacement of the salt shed, contract 12-HW-41, to Clearspan Fabric Structures of Windsor, Connecticut, for a total bid price of $7,169.98, with payment to be made at unit prices and/or lump sum prices pending receipt of a certificate of insurance, 100% performance, and 100% labor and material bond.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to award a contract for the installation of a gasoline fuel dispenser at the Highway Garage, contract 12-HW-45, to Northeast Petroleum Services and Supply Incorporated of Jamaica Plain, Mass., for a bid, a total bid price of $59,887.78, with payment to be made at the unit prices and/or lump sum prices pending receipt of a certificate of insurance, 100% performance, and 100% labor and material bond.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm just going to abstain. I do a lot of business with them.
Okay. Four to zero on abstention.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to accept the regular session minutes for August 21st, 2012.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.[1791.82] Aye.
Aye.
Abstain. And one more other business?
Yep.
Sean and I went to a meeting last week, was it?
Wednesday, I thought.
Wednesday night, with all the different beach associations, and discussed the seawall situation, and they're concerned about it, we had a very candid, and I thought, productive meeting, and, you know, it's just, I know a couple of you guys went to the meeting prior to that, so they've all, they've gotten before all of us and talked to them about the conditions. Obviously, seawalls are a priority in the town, but funding is, as with everything, a concern, and I think, you know, we had good conversations about it, so that was that.
Can I just elaborate a little bit on that? Tricia, are you aware of what these organizations have been doing? Humrock, South Humrock, for example, and, you know, they're all broken up into their own groups, and going around canvassing the neighborhoods with these packages, in the event, there's a bad storm, and I meant to bring it with me, they, I had it, and I took it with me, and I didn't bring it. For example, who might have special needs, who's elderly, you know, do they have natural gas, are they aware, you know, just a lot of stuff that, you know, in a coastal community like this, that would really come in handy. They even went as far as having a rugged placard that's, you know, on one side that said, "Need help," the other side, you know, they're okay. Someone would put that in their window, they're really, Jennifer Sullivan was there and spoke at length with the chief, you know, really being proactive, and in the event we have another, you know, blizzard, or, you know, no-name storm, and I count to a justice, I should have brought the material here, but it's late.
What's the group that they were working with, too?
Sands.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
Yep. And staff has been Jennifer particularly, and Chief Judge, and the CERT teams, for, I mean, there's a lot of good volunteer support in town around incidents.
Very impressed with their organization efforts and amount of effort, you know.
Every family, every home got a package, shall we say, that you just described, it's great, it's great.
Motion to adjourn. Wait, on a lighter note, it's football season, all right? This weekend, Friday night, I think the high school plays, can you confirm that? No? Wow, okay.
Don't watch out.
And all of the young kids will be playing on the fields on Sundays and Saturdays, so go out and watch them, and root for the home team. Move the board of selectmen...
Just one thing, as we go by, quite all right.
Don't be too hurried.
Quite all right.
And soccer, too.
And last Sunday, just to denote, there was truck day, I beat the trucks, I went there this...
Touch the truck.
Last Friday.
Touch the truck, out here in the front lawn, and you had to see it, the number of children and families, literally hundreds of children who came up to touch the truck, get on the truck, with the operators accompanying them, it was just fantastic, it was just something you wouldn't really believe, would have that much participation, until your town administrator was out there driving it back home. It was interesting, so.
That's where that building went. Move board of selectmen vote to adjourn the meeting at approximately 10:00 PM following the signing of documents, should there be such documents.
Second.
To sign.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
Good night, folks.
That's the top of our landfill. No, I know, I started reading it today, Land Council? See the top of our landfill?
It's saved.
It's not ours, that's what it's going to look like. No, it's good.
I don't know what's going on with that hill, do you?
Talk to Greg Morris, he's actually trying to spearhead a Oktoberfest, the same event that had been basically killed because of the train, and the whole point was to make it...
Yeah, for the master plan committee.
Get up, back to North Situate, the main reason that it's been for years, to maybe incorporate a chowder fest, something that would be nice.
I have more of that.
Okay.
More of a story about it.
Okay. Okay. 10 o'clock.
Secretary or the assistant, administrative assistant for the chamber.
No, she's the one from Duxbury.